Okay, good morning to my colleagues, to county staff and those citizens who are tuning in this morning. What a beautiful October day. If you get a chance, make sure you get outside and take a walk today because it sounds like after tomorrow it's going to get a little chilly. So it's just that time of year, but what a gorgeous day today. So with you a little bit late than what we're normally, we normally come to you on, but we have relatively good agenda today and I think we'll get through it just fine. October the 15th, as always, we're going to stand for the pledge and then we're going to observe a moment of silence. After that, as always, let's keep all those on the front lines in your thoughts. We had one of our employees here, one of our employees from Citizen Service or Aging lose her mom this week. So let's keep, let's keep her in our thoughts as well. And to all those that are sick, you know, let's keep everybody in our thoughts. So to my colleagues that are in the meeting room, if either Commissioner Frazier or Boucher would lead us in the pledge and then we'll do the moment of silence.
I think it's your turn, Boucher.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Wance. Well done. Okay. Thank you guys very much. Let's, let's jump right into priority Carol this morning. And let's start, let, let's start with Weaver today. We haven't started with Weaver in quite some time. So I don't know what kind of precedence that's going to set for the rest of the session, but let's start with Weaver.
Well, I'm starting, you're starting your day off right here. First of all, I just want to say the Farm Bureau Business Meeting the other night, they went through their top three priorities recommended for us. And I think it's some interesting reading. I will be forwarding those to each of you to look over on items. And certainly the Farm Museum in Carroll County, Food Truck Fridays, not easy to say, is there and they are free at the end of this month, Friday is free at the Farm Museum. They have food trucks. I think last week they had 443 people with not over 150 people in the museum at any one time. Dennis, I think you attended.
I was here.
And, you know, and people picked up their food, left, and there wasn't a crowd or a large crowd at all. But yet it was profitable to the Farm Museum and you know, really worked. So I think that's a floss. So if Friday afternoon, Friday, you want to go to the food truck, pick up some, pick up dinner Friday, go to the Farm Museum. And they're getting ready for their Christmas tours and that information is going to get out. Next thing, next Thursday, you have a virtual meeting with the Thanksburg Area Planning Council featuring yours truly as the, I guess, main course for that night. So if anybody wants to chime in, feel free. So that's about it.
All right. Commissioner Rothstein, good morning.
Good morning. A couple of things. One, Commissioner Wance and I had the pleasure of attending the BWI Business Partnership Breakfast, albeit virtual this morning. The keynote speaker was our governor, Governor Hogan. And he shared a few things and I just want to provide a couple of takeaways, comments that he made. One, as you know, we are doing very well in the downward trend of cases across Maryland, especially compared to some extreme spikes across our country. But with that said, he was very clear to say, we're absolutely not over this. And he, he said, which was interesting, we are at halftime when it comes to this virus. So you know, with, with that, I just want to continue to push the wearing of masks and social distance. If you are going into any public place, physical place, you should be and must be wearing a mask. It is our responsibility, especially as leaders to continue to wear masks and keep social distancing. And that goes for anything, commercial, government, or especially houses now that we're getting ready for the holiday season. And that's going to be a very challenging time for, for gatherings. So he brought that up very clearly in doing that. He also brought up his intent to continue to push for stimulus packages from our federal government, but the expectation is still relatively low in the next few weeks, especially as we're going into the election season. But he talked a lot about small business growth and development, providing $10 billion across the state from federal and state funds for business recovery and sending half billion dollars across the state for unemployment or a couple of numbers. All that said, he said, we're still leaving Maryland in a $1.8 billion shortfall. So it's, it's still, we're not out of the woods and we've got a long ways to go. Last, again, wear masks, wear masks and shop local. You know, especially with the holiday season, people are going to be tending to go to Amazon. Let's continue to push for local businesses to, you know, stay, stay alive throughout the season and prosper as they can in getting into the next year. So that's what I got for this morning. Thanks.
Thanks, Ed. Commissioner Boucher, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Wance. Thanks for mentioning how beautiful autumn is in Carroll County. I was able to go on a tour of the kayak launch sites with Director Jeff Daggett on Tuesday. There he is. Got him in a lot of photos. I joke around and say, where's Waldo? Where's Daggett? This is the, the ramp site, which we authorized for construction at Double Pipe Creek Park. The only thing left is they're going to install a roller slide system in the center there for us epic people, code for I guess senior citizens, to be able to haul our kayaks up and down to the creek. It's a wonderful project. It's not complete yet. He took me on a tour and explained to me how these launch sites are going to work. We did three locations. The first was Hapes Mill Road up in Commissioner Wance's district in Middlesburg. It is absolutely gorgeous up there. That launch site is on Big Pipe Creek. And the second site I attended was in Union Bridge. And that site is on Little Pipe Creek. These two creeks merged together into the Double Pipe Creek Park area right there. And that's where the bottom of the ramp comes out. So the two up creek spots, this ramp will be the pullout point. So it's a very neat idea. It's great. And thanks to the work of the Parks Department Surveying Citizens and coming up with this concept that, you know, as we get older, less of us are running, more of us want to walk. And economically, these water trails are a fantastic idea because the only construction we need is on the launch sites and the takeout spots. The trail is already made by the waterway. We don't have any impact upon the environment. We're not cutting trees now. We're not graveling over anything. So I want to thank Director Daggett and all of his staff for putting this together. There's Waldo again. And once again, thank you very much for everything everyone's doing. And hopefully next year we'll do a a public opening of these ramps and I'll be able to launch. And I told Jeff, he has to kayak with me and maybe we'll get some publicity to it. But it's important, important for the public to know that this is all out there and it's forthcoming. So thank you very much.
All right. Commissioner Frazier. Dennis, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. I want to tag on to what Commissioner Weaver said about the food truck Fridays at the Farm Museum. I was there last Friday. The food trucks are very spaced out. You, I mean, even if there was a large line, which there weren't any large lines, but even if there was, you wouldn't be next to another, another food truck because you got all that room at, at the Farm Museum. So they're very, very spaced out. Everyone walking around, unless of course they were eating, that I saw had masks on, everything. It was very, very well run. If you're thinking about, I mean, I was with you. I went because my wife was away. So no one was cooking dinner that night. So I figured it's a good way to get a meal and that's why I went there. It worked, it worked very well. Also say yesterday, I went to the flu shot clinic that we had here at the county, got my flu shot. I think it's a great idea for everyone to do that this time of year, especially with COVID still around. You don't want to have to get the flu or you don't want to get anything, but getting your flu shot. And I want to put a special shout out to anyone that'd be wrestling for me, although I doubt that they're actually watching this because I told them to though. Get your flu shot. The wrestling season, the winter seasons are going to be short enough if we have them. You don't want to miss a week or two of the, of the sports season because you had the flu. So get a flu shot and you're, you'll be ready to go for the season. There was a school board meeting last night. Probably most people did tune in to watch it, but I just want to say that schools in the hybrid system will be starting on the 19th for elementary, middle schools. And the high schools will start their, their projection data starting, so start the second quarter, which would be November 12th. So, and you can check those dates in case I wrote them down wrong, but I'm pretty sure I'm right on those particular things. So, so we have Monday starting the, the elementary, middle schools. And that's about all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Dennis. Yeah, I'll echo the food truck thing. I heard it was very successful. I didn't get a chance to go out there, but they're doing a great job with that. So well done. And that goes to Commissioner Rothstein's message of supporting small business. Food trucks are your perfect example of a small business. So make sure you take advantage of, of what they're providing at the Farm Museum. A couple of quick things. Yes, echoing Commissioner Rothstein, today's BWI partnership, virtual breakfast. I still haven't gotten used to eating virtual scrambled eggs, but I'll get there eventually, I guess. Was very good. We heard a great message from the governor and, you know, to all those that continue to push back on masks and all that kind of hand washing and social distancing and whatever, I, I think we need to keep in mind that Maryland is in a much better shape. As a matter of fact, he used the, the number of 21 states that are now going in the opposite direction as a result of them not paying attention and doing the things that we've done here in the state. So, you know, I know there's a lot of angst out there. I know that there are folks that are pandemicked out and they're exhausted. But we're at a good place here in Maryland and we're, and we're able to get to things happening like the hybrid learning and all of those things as a result of the fact that we've been spot on with doing what we need to do. And that's as a result of Governor Hogan's leadership. So well done on that. I attended the shock trauma board meeting this week as well and heard an incredible message and I wish I could, I asked for a copy of it, but they had an, an epidemiologist expert on there talking about masks and what they do when it comes to combating this. Man, I wish everybody that, that wants to push back on that could have heard this young man. He actually works for the University of Maryland, University of Maryland System. And when I get that, I will be sharing that with my colleagues. I don't know if I brought this up before, but just a reminder that there was some work being done behind the scenes. I was honored to be a part of that work group that brought one of our helicopters back online as it was projected to be cut. So we are back up to seven ships in the state of Maryland as a result of some hard work. And you know, that goes to an interesting scenario here because this past Saturday in my district, we had two helicopters on an incident with a third en route on, on one single incident. So we need those ships and they're back. So I'm honored to have been a part of that work group. And I want to personally thank a very good friend of mine who used to be a delegate down in Annapolis, and that's Jimmy Malone. Jimmy, Jimmy, Jimmy led that charge, reached out to me and I worked closely with Jimmy to get that done. So he's, he did a yeoman's job there. I also had a chance, and we've never done this before in the county, first time. Tuesday evening, I attended the, the National Federation for the Blind Carroll County Chapter. And you'd be amazed at the number of blind folks that we have in Carroll County. And I read a proclamation that we put together and I want to quickly read this if you will bear with me here because today is White Cane Awareness Day. And we've never really made a whole big deal about that here in Carroll. But being right next door to the Maryland School for the Blind in Frederick puts us in a, in an interesting place here in Carroll. And again, a young lad by the name of Christopher Neusbaum, who worked for my campaign back in 2013, an incredible young man who, who I've been friends with ever since, reached out to me and as a result, we're recognizing the fact that we have to continue to, to help those citizens who, who are blind. So today's White Cane Awareness Day, I'm not going to go through this whole, this whole proclamation, but we did declare it and give a proclamation and we'll put that on our website. And it just advises that in Carroll County, we call upon our schools, colleges, universities to offer full opportunities for training to blind persons, upon employers and the public to utilize the available skills of competent blind persons and to open new opportunities for the blind in our rapidly changing society. And we ask upon all of our citizens to recognize the white cane as a tool of independence for blind pedestrians on our streets and highways. And that is probably the most critical part of the message that I have today. A lot of the things that we see going on on our highways as a result of those not paying attention and folks trying to get somewhere too quick. So pay attention folks out there on our highways and byways as we get through this fall season and, you know, pay attention to those folks in our communities that are blind and we, we, we want to help them as much as we can. So today is White Cane Awareness Day. We'll put that on our website. Lastly, I did attend the Ag Center Board Meeting virtually, I guess, if you will. And they're still doing a good job up there at the Ag Center. They're having a flea market this Saturday. What I want to point out is with that, there was a photo of a previous year flea market. And it looked like there was about a thousand people in the Ag Center. Probably not the best picture to put up as an advertisement for this Saturday's flea market. So I got on the phone and asked them to take that down. I want everyone to know that the Ag Center in the, in the, in the things that they're doing out there, they actually have a system in place that they installed that counts people going in the doors and counts them going out the doors and keeps the percentage of folks that are in that building constantly on a computer screen. It's an amazing tool. So everyone in order to get in will have to wear a mask, no questions asked. And if someone is not going to wear it, they'll be kindly asked to leave. That's already happened over there and they're doing a good job of making sure that people do that. So they're going to have best practices in place. So my point here is they're doing some good work over there to ensure that they have best practices. If you want to head out to that flea market, it's going to be safe. They've checked with the health department and they know exactly how many people were in the Shipley Arena. So it, it's an interesting tool that they put in over there and actually gives you the percentage of people that are in the building. So beyond that, I think that's all I have. Anybody miss anything from Priority Carol? If not.
I just wanted to mention, thank you for giving credit to former delegate Jimmy Malone. He's worked very hard on that issue you mentioned. And actually it was his father, the late Sheriff Ned Malone, got me involved in politics so he could blame his dad for it. So he did a very good job on this and was on top of that issue.
Yeah, remind me to talk to Jimmy about that.
Go talk to Jimmy. Blame him.
Okay. All right. With that being said, we'll move into our first agenda item and that is our usual discussion on anything COVID. Nothing really has come out this past week. Ed, you're in tune as much as I am. I don't believe we've had anything there from the state. So I will immediately turn it over to, to Maggie. Maggie Coons is on here today. Ed had a, Ed Singer had a previous commitment and I don't know about you guys, but it certainly is a pleasure to see Maggie instead of Ed. I say that out loud. Anyway, anyway, Maggie, if you'll give us the latest and greatest, we'll start with you this morning. Good morning.
Sure. Good morning. Thanks for having me. I think Greg's giving me ability to share. So let me get that set up for you. Once, remember, remember, once this happens, then I can't see you. So hopefully you'll have to let me know if anything isn't, you can't see things, but here, here we go.
Yeah, we've, we've got, there you go. Yeah, you're, you're up Maggie, you're running. Yep.
Great. Okay. So this is, we're, we're pretty much on the same track as, as last week. As you can see here, just trending up just a little bit from last week. I think we're now at 69 cases last week. The, the numbers do adjust over time. I think we've mentioned before. It just has, as it happens, it's, you know, we just, we go back, we correct things, we fix things, we get a little more information. And so those numbers change by one or two sometimes. So, so about 69 cases last week, and I think we're at about 29 cases this week so far. So about on the same track, maybe a couple, a couple So about on the same track, maybe a couple, a couple fewer than we were at this time uh last week. And stop me if you have any questions on any of these slides. Um this are, again, this are probable cases by week and uh just remind you and and those watching that the probable cases are cases that are tested by antigen testing that the um most rapid tests are antigen tests. And uh because they're not quite as reliable, um they are not included as um laboratory confirmed cases. So they're not in the rest of our data. So we just feel like it's important to show you that they are. We do continue to get these um these cases. They come into our system and uh we do treat them like positive cases. The positives are pretty reliable and so um they do go through contact tracing, just like a a regular PCR positive, but they're not included in the rest of our data. So it's just important to note that those cases um continue to come in.
Maggie, I have a question for you.
Sure.
On the on those uh probable cases. It's my understanding, and I correct you if I'm wrong, so I'm asking you, is that the people they they get those tests are people that are showing symptoms and that's why they get the rapid test?
Uh I think, I mean, probably more 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 so, yeah. Um people who are looking for a quick turnaround or maybe going to the doctor, they're getting something there. Um but I I'm not sure that that's entirely the case, I think. Um and there is some, you know, there are different types of them and I think that the um consistency varies based on how at what point in the infection people are, because it depends on your viral load and depends on um kind of where you are in the infection. So uh that's one of the reasons I think they're still trying to uh, you know, they're still learning more about how to interpret these test results. Um but we do know the positives are pretty um are pretty reliable. So um that's an, and that's an excellent question. I don't know if it's if it's more people symptomatic, symptomatic people who are getting these tests, but um certainly that does kind of impact the um the use of these tests and the the interpretation of these tests.
Right, thank you.
Sure, hopefully we'll we'll continue to learn and there continue to be more types of tests and more uh point of care tests that are coming uh coming to us and we're you know, looking at that. We're working with this date to figure out how best to make use of those tests. Some tests, I think Ed had mentioned uh can be used for different purposes, for screening and surveillance versus uh just diagnostic testing. And we're just trying to learn how best to use the resources that we have available uh for testing, you know, so to just to to make sure that as many people as possible are informed, but. Okay, uh so here's our rolling uh average, 14 day rolling average. You've seen this before. It looks pretty similar, just does a good job kind of smoothing things out, but still shows you the peaks that we've experienced. Uh and we're, you know, kind of um kind of creeping up on a little one here um right now. So you can see us just just continuing to go up a little bit. Uh deaths by week. So um there isn't any change reflected in this graph, which was completed earlier this week, but since then, we actually have had two community deaths among older adults um here in Carroll County. So those will appear next week. I feel like I'm giving you the the scoop for next week, but I just wanted you to be aware that there have been, it's been, you know, since August, early August, that we've had any community fatalities, but we have just this week had two.
Ms Coons, those numbers look pretty good in light of what we're faced with. Would you happen to have the average age of our county fatalities available or could you obtain that?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, just repeat that.
Excuse me. Would you happen to have the average age of our county fatalities? Is that something you could obtain for us?
Okay, I can't actually hear you right now, so um let me try turning some things off.
Maggie, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, it might be something over there in that room. But uh Commissioner Boucher asked about the average age of deaths. Is that something, is that something you guys have?
I I can get it. I don't have it at my fingertips today. I can definitely tell you that um for the most part, our um our deaths, like uh you know, many places are are the average age of our deaths is uh they're they're mostly elderly folks. There are folks who are from, for the most part, over 65. We haven't had any any um really, you know, really young people uh pass away here in um in the county. Of course, that's happened in other places in the country. Uh there have been people under 65 who have passed away in our county, but I would say the average age is probably closer to to 70 or so. Uh and remember, again, all obviously, most of our um fatalities have been in um in facilities uh where they tend to be uh older folks as well. Um but on average, I could give you the average age, but right now I would estimate it's around, it's somewhere in the in their seventies.
Commissioner Lance, thanks for helping me with the mic difficulties I was having.
Yes, thank you. Okay, uh next slide. The ICU beds in use. Um I think Ed mentioned again last week that there was a little bit of a bump at the end of um the previous week and into this last week. And you can see that here on the graph. Uh we're looking at um any days where there are over 10 beds in use in the ICU at Carroll Hospital for any reason. Uh and that's again, just remember from the very beginning of all this, that we were really looking at the surge uh in hospital use to just just keep an eye on our capacity for for healthcare. Uh and so uh Ed did speak with Garrett Hoover from Carroll Hospital about this spike and he wasn't too concerned. Uh it came back down where, you know, we're we're hovering a little bit higher, um closer to that 10, but um but they weren't weren't too concerned about this particular spike. So um but just to be aware, we'll continue to monitor this data as a as a measure of healthcare capacity in our community. Uh and here are the community cases by week and age group. Um I know the lines are very thin and there are more and more of them. Um but if you can look at the last week, I'll bring your attention to the the group at the far end, that 65 plus. Um that group went up significantly last last week in our cases. You can see the the average age certainly went up. Uh and that older group is experiencing more cases once again. Um there have been some national studies that have sort of shown, sort of showed over time a kind of a change from where you might see a peak in the younger ages and then gradually that moves to older older ages and then to older adults um as as uh the cases ripple through the community. So that does appear to be happening here where we had some really high numbers in our younger age groups. And now we're seeing that uh that subside a little bit and we're seeing our older age groups um testing positive more. Um so just just noting that that um that's been seen across the country in many, many places. They've sort of noticed, especially where there were hotspots. They looked back at the age patterns uh in the previous month and they saw that it went kind of from from younger adults to then older adults. And as we know, we worry a little bit more about severe illness and um and fatalities in older adults. Uh and here just again is our hospitalizations and deaths by age group. So it shows you again, um as we mentioned before, probably should have should have seen this before. I talked about the average age, but as you can see, uh more of the fatalities um first, you know, significant number of fatalities and um hospitalizations are in the older age group. Okay, that's all my slides. Anybody have any any additional questions?
Um Maggie, great rundown, as always. Not a question, but more of a a statement because this does come under state directives and um so it's not necessarily for you, Maggie, except possibly. Have there been any changes in state directives that you are aware of from the governor's office or from the administration?
Not that I'm aware of, nothing uh significant that I'm aware that's changed um in the last couple of weeks. Um trying to think of anything. I mean, there are uh, you know, there are a lot, a lot of rules out there, a lot of smaller things. But I have, I'm not aware of anything major that's changed in the last week.
Okay, because as uh Commissioner Lance and I shared a few minutes ago, Governor Hogan saying that, you know, we are down to 3% in cases and there's been an increase uh across 20 states in our country with COVID-19. Those 20 states, many of those states are the Midwest states with a lot less occupancy or or population per square mile than what we have here in Carroll County. So the expectation that Carroll County, because of our population being small and spread out, is uh not as um concerning. It is false because the states that are getting very large uh spikes, the South Dakota, North Dakota areas in Oklahoma and again, the Midwest, they are much less um populated per square mile. I am absolutely 100% not in favor of masked police, quote unquote. Um but with that said, there are places where we can not as a control mask, but identify. We can identify masks in in uh in uh in buildings. We can identify um safe distancing. We can identify occupancy within buildings. I've been going to the rec football because I shared my son coaches. There are folks that aren't wearing masks, uh but they're keeping themselves separate uh distance apart. Uh a lot of people seem to be trying to wear masks. I'm not going up to people saying, hey, put a mask on. No, it's it's not my place uh to do that. And it is outdoors and there's a a a less, you know, restriction. But indoors, if there's been no change in directives from our governor from the state, if there's occupancy, if there is safe distancing and if there's mandatory mask wearing in buildings, then we as leaders and Board of Commissioners adhere to that because I always believed that leaders lead through integrity, doing what's right, whether people are watching or not. And um I I want to make sure that those that are vulnerable to becoming sick are not given, unfortunately, this disease and transmitted by those that are not willing to keep safe distance or overoccupy or not wear masks. It's not about the vulnerability of those that are dying and getting sick. It's those that are um transmitting this unfortunate pandemic to those folks. Because I'm very confident that the younger and more healthy will get over it, you know. And I look forward to that, but just like with my own parents, I'm worried about them and me transmitting. So it's me wearing a a mask. It's me keeping safe distance. It's me ensuring that I don't overoccupy location. Uh I don't mean to be preaching so much, but that's what I'm seeing right now is that there's a lot of wear and tear on the this pandemic. We as leaders must do what's right and maintain integrity, uh whether people are watching or not. Wear the masks, maintain occupancy and maintain safe distancing while in buildings. So unless there is a different directive provided by the state, that's that's the law. And and we don't have a chance to change that law because we're not in that position. That was given to us by legal advice from uh Mr. Burke early on. So um that's why I just wanted to ask if there's been any different directives and I don't believe there have been. So uh okay.
No, Commissioner Rothstein, you are right. There have really not been any any significant changes. And as you said, it is really the law that that people, when they're inside in public uh or outdoors and can't social distance in public, um really need to continue to wear face coverings and social distance. Uh but it's also, I I feel like a community responsibility. It's um it's not perfect. We're again, uh we're not looking, it's just like we are in the beginning. We're not looking to stop the spread of the virus. We can't do that. We can't expect that we're going to do that. We're looking to slow the spread as much as possible for the same reasons we always have been. We're looking to to keep the um the healthcare system running. So we're trying not to overwhelm them with flu cases and COVID cases and to allow them to treat everybody who needs uh care at for whatever reason at any time. We are uh we're trying to protect the vulnerable because even if the vulnerable are staying home and are able to um to social distance themselves, um they are still cared for by people who have to go out in the community and have to work and have to shop and um you know, aren't staying home. And so um by by doing all we can, even though these things we do, wearing masks and social distancing are imperfect, uh they are the best tools that we have right now to prevent the spread, to reduce the spread, slow the spread of the virus, uh protect ourselves, our loved ones and our communities. So I I totally agree. The rules haven't changed. The the guidelines really haven't changed. Um we're all tired of them, um although, you know, there are some nice, you know, nice masks, you know, for uh for uh, you know, accessorizing. Um and we we uh, you know, we just need to kind of keep up. Um and and I do appreciate all that, all that you have done as leaders to um to show the community that this is still important um and that we need to keep doing it um as we as we continue to move forward together and protect each other.
Yeah, Maggie, very well said. And the governor uh was asked about vaccinations and he said the timing was very timely, as he said, however he said it, uh that they are providing the CDC with a distribution plan tomorrow, either today or tomorrow um from the state of Maryland. Uh and he is looking at those that are vulnerable to getting sick. Excuse me, those that are on the front line to to taking care of those that are sick and then a distribution plan from there. Uh so I'm glad it was asked. Um but you know, it's it's flattening this curve of, you know, getting people sick to ensure the resources become available like these vaccinations. So again, really well said and I just want to, I do believe leaders lead. So, okay, thanks, Maggie.
Sure. And just a quick word on vaccines. We have worked on a local plan, um you know, for vaccine distribution. So just so folks know, that is something that um every local jurisdiction has done um and that we're prepared to uh, you know, when things become uh become ready. And I I thought this morning of a good kind of analogy. I know um folks are a little uncomfortable about the vaccination, the sort of testing process. Um but luckily, we've heard from a lot of pharmaceutical companies and 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 leaders saying that they're really committed to a safe process for developing a vaccination. Um and I know the state is involved in that as well. Um and I just want to say it's a little bit like, if you, you know, it is faster than usual and I think that's because people are really sharing some of their um their findings and being able to really um kind of, it's like, to me, it's like um when you're trying to make a different kind of muffin and you're using your base muffin recipe to develop something new. We're developing a new kind of new recipe for a vaccine that works on coronavirus, this coronavirus. But um what we're using a a an old based recipe. So we're, you know, um I think that that um hopefully the public can have confidence in this vaccine and and know that I think um we are working hard to make sure that we can, we can distribute it to the groups that need it um as it becomes available. Any other questions I can answer for you folks this morning?
Not only are they great to accessorize, Maggie, but as the weather gets chillier, they also keep your face warm. Just saying. Okay, any other questions for Maggie? Hey Maggie, one thing that I have real quick, the testing at the Shipley Arena. Uh still doing Tuesday, Thursday, Sunday. I heard that there might be uh a change at some point on that and then maybe numbers. Are they still up out there? Are we still testing the amount of folks that we were before?
So um you're right. I I believe we're considering a change in dates, but I haven't heard that confirmed yet, but I think that would be happening in a couple of weeks, maybe the beginning of November or so. So um so stay tuned for that. Uh we are still uh testing, I think, pretty good numbers. We had a record number the other day. I think that was last Sunday. Um we had about 122 people go through. Um and testing is, you know, available in in other sites as well. And so I think testing continues to be pretty good, pretty consistent. Um you know, folks should know, we we offer the PCR test. It's pretty simple to sign up to get it at our site. Um and it is available three times a week and it is, you know, no cost to to folks. So um I think we're, I think we're doing well. We could continue to, you know, I just urge people that if there's any reason they feel like they need to be tested um to come and get tested. It's it's not, it's really not that bad. I've been tested. It's not fun, but it's not as bad as you think. And uh it's definitely uh not not hard to do and and our results are still turning around pretty quickly.
Okay, and the the hotline that was available, the COVID hotline through the Health Department, still up and running? Is that correct, Maggie?
It is still up and running, 410-876-4848. Uh that's Monday through Friday, eight to five, and we do take messages on the weekends. Um it's a great way, if you are not sure if you need to be tested or if you have a question about testing, they definitely uh refer a lot of folks to testing and help them find uh the testing they need, but they can answer other questions as well. Um and and take concerns and talk, talk folks through that. Um also, just want to make you aware, you know, our website is a great place to go for uh daily data updates. We do that every weekday. And um we do, are now posting the slides from these meetings and also from the Board of Education meetings on our COVID page. So if folks want to want to look at those up close, they can certainly do that.
Okay, all this information is extremely important, not only because you guys are doing a great job over there, but to remind our citizens that, as Governor Hogan said today, uh that Commissioner Rothstein and I heard, we're at about halftime here is is his guess. Uh you know, and I'm I'm not sure how good a guess that is, but uh I think he's probably about spot on based on some of the information we're hearing. So I encourage folks uh to re to to, again, do not become complacent. We gotta we gotta keep doing what we're doing here because uh I've said it many times before and I I don't, I don't want to go back to where we were about four months ago. I really don't. And if we don't keep doing this, that's exactly where we're going to be. So that's, you know, uh very important. So make sure you, if, we'll we'll put that uh number out again, Maggie, to remind folks of questions they have to call the hotline and certainly to go to your website. Any other questions for Maggie?
I was wondering what percentage of the people who test positive for the in the infection or asymptomatic show no signs at all? Do we have any data on that?
Uh Commissioner Boucher, you like to ask the tough questions. I did hear that one.
Needs to answer certain questions for the public. So I appreciate you're uh recognizing that.
Uh so I'm not sure what our um our results show. I know a nation nationwide- Uh, so I'm not sure what our, um, our results show. I know a nation, nationwide, I think it's around forty percent. Uh, I don't know that we collect that in a way that we could, uh, we can easily get that for all the tests that we receive from labs. Because we don't get, um, a lot of information. We just get, um, you know, kind of the basics about, um, positive tests. But, um, I will find out what more we know and let you know.
Well, I appreciate that. Also, I'm really curious as to why, even though we have a face mask policy in place, our infections are up. But fortunately our fatalities are down. There seems to be no correlation whatsoever between infections going up. And the fatalities, and I find that extremely baffling. I was hoping that, you know, the health department could dig into and discover that. Because ultimately we have good news. The fatalities are down and that's our ultimate objective. But our infections are up and you're saying around forty percent have no signs at all. So actually we have very good news out there. But I, I don't understand why, if we do have a face mask policy in place, our infections are up. And also it's been made public by the CDC that eighty-four percent of people who are infected. Wear masks. So, um, it's all very puzzling for me and I think a lot of people out there. So we're turning to the health department to try to get some answers. So anything you can produce for us in the next meetings will be sincerely appreciated. And also as always, you and the staff there does a wonderful job and we're very grateful for the service you provide. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Boucher. Let me give you some short answers and I can get you some more information next week. But, uh, face masks, as we said, are not, uh, perfect. They are just designed to sort of, uh, slow the spread and that may mean, uh, preventing an infection or it may mean they think now even maybe making a less of an infection. So maybe you're blocking some of the droplets and so the person, um, who you infect does not get as sick. Um, they're not sure about that yet, but they're looking at whether it's sort of a dose response, um, effect. Um, we know, as I said, it really face masks. That's why we have to have face masks and social distancing and all these other things in place, avoiding, uh, groups and doors. All those things together kind of add up to reduce the numbers of infections. But, um, but certainly a mask in and of itself does not, you know, completely prevent, um, infections from spreading. Um, I think you, you mentioned the, the deaths and yes, certainly that's one of our main goals is to prevent people from dying of coronavirus. But, um, we also want people to, uh, you know, we want to maintain our healthcare system and we also want to make sure that. Um, we're reducing infections as much as possible while we, while we can, if we can, before we have, uh, more treatments and, uh, other ways to prevent it. Because people are having some long lasting health effects from COVID and, um, we want to try to prevent that as well. Um, we did see the two community deaths, uh, just this week and, um, you know, spikes in deaths do tend to follow several weeks behind, um, spikes in infections. And so we'll continue to watch that and see if we see any more community fatalities. Um, I think because we've done a good job here, we're able to hopefully provide good care for people who do get sick and do need to be hospitalized. And hopefully that and the, and continued scientific discoveries of, uh, treatments. Um, will help prevent infections moving forward. Um, we also are seeing, you know, a lot of those infections were in younger folks. And so hopefully they're less likely to, to need to be hospitalized. Um, so there are a lot of reasons why we're seeing more infections, but less fatalities, treatments, younger adults. Um, you know, just had those kinds of, those are definitely signs of progress. So you're right, those are good signs. It doesn't mean that we should, uh, stop doing what we're doing to try to prevent the spread because we don't know. Um, you know, there are still people who are going to pass away. There are still people who are going to get seriously ill. There are still people who are going to have long lasting health effects. And so we're trying to prevent that as much as possible. Uh, but you're right, it's a good sign and hopefully we'll continue to see that locally and across the country and the world.
Well, you, you made a really good point about the delay between infections and fatalities. And your chart that you just pulled up about the infections on the senior citizens of the highest bracket is a big concern to me. Especially after what you just said, because, and I alluded to the average age of the fatality, because that's the area that I'm really concerned about. And I, I hope we don't see a spike in our near fatalities as a result of the spike in the elderly population being affected. So we'll pay close attention to that. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. One more quick thing just to keep in mind, um, I think I will, we will talk more about this later. But one of the things that we're seeing locally, I think, and across the country is, um, sort of increased spread from smaller group gatherings. Um, where folks don't get together very often. And even though it's family or close friends, um, they think they don't need to wear a mask or a social distance. And it's very difficult. Um, but, um, that is, that is one area where we're seeing, um, transmission. And I think that's probably an area where, uh, a way that, that older folks are, you know, may be infected, uh, by younger folks, not through anybody, you know? Um, you know, people trying to be careful, but it may still happen. So just to be aware that that's a way that, uh, you know, it can be spread through these small group gatherings that feel really safe. Because there are people that you know, um, nobody's intentionally spreading it, but it does, it does still spread.
You made a very, very good point and we have the holiday season forthcoming. And it's a concern of all of us here, how that'll impact these rates of infection and potentially lead in to the fatalities of our senior population. So all your briefings are very helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for letting me chat.
Okay. Any other, any other questions or comments for Maggie? Let her go. The only thing I can say is what we don't often talk about, and you touched on it, Maggie, was the long-term healthcare effects. That it's going to have on anybody that's getting them. And no one really knows those yet, because obviously we're in, we're in the middle of this thing. Um, but for those that think they're, they're Superman and yeah, I got it. Now I'm better. And for the absurdity of people saying we're immune now, um, that, that, that just is. I, I can't even begin to tell you how that is just so absurd to me. And that was brought to light when I heard, um, University of Maryland's, uh, epidemiologist give his presentation on Tuesday. Um, these long-term effects are troubling. So more to come on that, I know. Yep. Anything else for Maggie? Maggie, thanks. If you're available next Thursday, we'll take you next Thursday as well. Tell Singer to hit the road. All right. Thanks very much.
Thank you all. Have a great day.
All right. You too, Maggie. Thanks. All right. Uh, with that being said, we go into our, a relief fund update. I don't know that we have a whole lot today, but I'll turn it over to our county administrator, Roberta Wyndham and our, um. Our grants manager here is, is, is with us as well, uh, Deb Standiford. So ladies, good morning.
Morning Commissioners. Um, as alluded to by Commissioner, uh, Wance, no, we don't really have much, um, today. As I mentioned last week, we're in sort of the halfway point along with the governor, um, that, uh, we're, we're reassessing. Um, we are all the, um, you know, sort of doing a midway accounting and, um, seeing what's been spent, what hasn't been spent. What, um, is still yet planned to be spent so that we can come back to you next week. With, um, some additional recommendations on how to spend, um, currently unspent money or anticipate money that is anticipated not to be spent. So that's where we stand at the moment. Mostly more to come next week.
Any questions for Roberta or Deb? Well done. Ladies, you're, you're off the hook. Thank you. Okay.
All right. Like that.
Yeah. We're actually going to address a couple of the COVID relief funding projects that we're doing here. Uh, in a couple of agenda items coming up. So we'll get more on that then. So. Um, I have one correction to make before we get into the next item on our agenda. I had mistakenly mentioned that the Maryland School for the Blind is in Frederick. It is not. Maryland School for the Blind is in Baltimore. Maryland School for the Deaf is in Frederick. So. Uh, that makes it even more of a reason to pay attention to those folks that, uh, that, um. That need our help when it comes to the disabilities. And, uh, so pay attention to that. So I stand corrected. As, as Dennis, I think you could, you could relate to, I think that's the first time this year and we're in October. Uh, anyway. All right. Next on our. You all right Weaver? Next on our agenda is the, uh, acceptance of the FY twenty-one Violence Against Women's Act. Uh, through our, uh, grant, through our state's attorney's office. And for that, I will go back to Deb Standiford. Deb, again, good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. I do not see, um, the state's attorney on the line. So I can go ahead with this item and see if they join us. This is our annual, um, award from, uh, G O C C P for the FY twenty-one Violence Against Women Act. Um, application. It supports the DV unit at the state's attorney's office and specifically the DV prosecutor's salary. Um, we were capped at last year's, uh, award, um, fifty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars. The, um, the governor's office, uh, uh, didn't ask us to apply this year. They simply, um, awarded funding for all the grantees that were in good standing and had met all their goals. So we did not have an application to submit. We were simply awarded the funding for the upcoming year. Um, the county match that you see on your briefing paper, the eighty thousand thirteen dollars is budgeted in fiscal twenty-one. Um, I, um, so we're here to ask your acceptance of that award and I will either try to answer questions. Or I will, um, ask the state's attorney to provide, um, answers to any questions that you might have about this application. I'm sorry that they're not on the line.
Yeah, we're a little bit ahead of schedules. That might be why.
I think so.
Deb on this, uh, as you read the briefing paper. I'm not hearing any questions, uh, Deb. So I guess we're probably good to go.
I mean, we do have, we have had this grant for years. We, we've looked at it, you know, in, in times in past. So I think maybe that's why there's no questions, but I'll make the motion to board a commission to accept FY twenty twenty-one V A W A grant award.
All right. Got a motion in second to, uh, to accept this award. Any other thoughts, questions on this? If not, all those in favor? And that's unanimous. Have a few people kind is to give them a buzz over there. Maybe they're, they were going to try to get on it. I think they were slated for about eleven-tenish. So just, just give them a buzz and, and tell them they got it.
I will. Thank you Commissioners.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, next on our agenda is, uh, construction contract. For New Windsor renovations and county office building emergency communications center renovations. And I will start with, uh, Mike Myers from purchasing and then we'll go from there. We've got Eric Burdine, our deputy director of public works on and our bureau chief of building construction, John Bowers. Mike, good morning.
Great. Good morning Commissioners. Yeah, we'd like to have a request for approval to award a contract for the, uh, renovation of both the New Windsor nine-one-one, um. Answering center and the secondary emergency communication center. Like to award the contract, the centennial contractors in the total amount of five hundred nineteen thousand, eight hundred nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. As you can see from your briefing paper, the two centers are split roughly fifty-fifty with the cost.
Good morning Commissioners. First, if I may, I'd like to introduce you all to John Bowers. John Bowers, as Commissioner Wance said, is our new bureau chief of building construction. Uh, he joins the building construction team with over twenty-five years of private development experience. Uh, most recently working for Daphne Kewan Walker as their owners representative. We are excited about, uh, John's experience and the, and the experience he brings to the Bureau of Building Construction and believe this experience will serve the county well. Please join me in welcoming John Bowers to the county team.
John, good morning and, uh, welcome to the team here at Carroll County. You've joined, uh, the best team in the state of Maryland. And we are lucky to have you on board. So, uh, it's a pleasure to have you.
Good morning, gentlemen. Pleasure to meet you as well. It, um, as Eric said, I just recently started first of October. And, um, really excited and happy to be a part of Carroll County government and particular Department of Public Works. And I'm excited to be able to have a very active role in some of the great projects we have coming up for. The citizens of Carroll County and, uh, look forward to working with you all in the future. And thank you. And it's great, great to be here.
Okay. Thanks, John. And, uh, and then so we'll go back to, uh, the projects at hand. Um, this morning, so we're, we're looking at, uh, requesting contract, contractor words Mike mentioned. Uh, for the New Windsor Emergency Management renovation, uh, this project is an eight hundred twenty-five square foot renovation at the library headquarters in New Windsor. Uh, the renovation consists of subdivision, existing open office space and four offices, a conference room and a storage room. Minimal HVAC, electric and low voltage work is required to serve the new offices. New walls, floors and some ceiling rework are also included in that project. Uh, the second project involved in this award is, uh, the secondary emergency communication center renovations. Uh, this project is a seven, one thousand seven hundred and seventy-five square foot renovation on the basement level of the county office building. Renovation includes expanding the existing secondary call center into adjacent office space. Expansion of the current kitchen, conversion of one bathroom into a shower and upgrading the other existing bathroom. Again, minimal HVAC, electric and low voltage work is required to serve the new workstations. Um, the total estimated project costs are under the approved budget of one million and no additional funding is anticipated. We are, however, requesting your approval to allow us the ability to spend up to twenty-five percent contingency in addition to the contract price. To allow us to manage construction change orders as they occur. Uh, this will allow us to keep the project on track with the expedited schedule.
Mr. Burdine, in, in light of fact that we ran into some asbestos difficulties here in the old county office building during reservation. Will there be the possible issue in this old building in New Windsor of having that, or has that all been cleared?
Uh, we are, we are fairly confident that the New Windsor building is cleared. But obviously as you open things up, you never know what could still be stuck behind walls. I mean, the, the reports we've read and, and the research we've done. We don't anticipate any finding anything out there. Uh, we do have, or feel there may be a chance that, that there may be some more, uh. Floor towel in the basement for that basement project. Uh, so there may be, depending on how the carpet comes up, that we, we may have to remediate some asbestos floor towel in the basement.
All right. Please keep us posted.
Absolutely. Well.
Are both these building projects a result of, of COVID and what we have to do to compensate for that? Or, or did, did this need to be done anyway?
Uh, both of these projects are CARES funded projects, um, and they will enhance both measures for COVID. Uh, including things as such as, uh, in the lobby, we're going to have self-check-in kiosks. And, uh, you know, the, the new, new sliding doors for the entrance rather than the, the doors you have to actually push. Do, or use a push button for. Um, then there's, so there's several security and COVID, uh, renovations or, 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 uh, pieces to this renovation.
Okay. As it pertains to these, I think you skipped ahead a little bit there, Eric. Uh, a lot coming up. Uh, but as pertains to these two projects, we've got them each kind of separate here. So to, to be clear, there are renovations at New Windsor for the library on the first floor. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then. Not for the library. No, they're for, they're for emergency services. We're, we're, um, putting, splitting up. Current classroom space into four offices for emergency services who are, they're, they're, um, being relocated. Because we're doing the expansion to the emergency communications center in the basement.
Okay. Got it. Okay. That was a, that was a little confusing on there. So that, so both of these projects are nine-one-one, uh, uh, related. And I think Mike, Mike, you said that. I think it just kind of went whoop right over my head this morning. Sorry about that. Okay. All right. Any other questions on these two projects?
Well, if there's no more questions, since it's in New Windsor, I move the board of commissioners award a contract for general construction services. The Centennial Contractors Enterprises, Inc. For the New Windsor Emergency Management renovation. And the secondary emergency communication center renovations in the amount of five hundred nineteen thousand, eight hundred nine dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Second.
All right. Got a motion in second on these two. Anything else? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. And we move from that to the, uh, lobby, uh, renovation, construction contract. And again, Mike.
Thank you. Yep. So now we'd like to award a, another contract, again, the centennial, uh, construction for the lobby renovation here in the county office building. Not of this contract, it'll be four hundred thirty-eight thousand, seventy-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. So same type of work, but I'll let Eric tell you a little bit more about it.
Yes, Commissioner. So this is the county office building lobby renovation. Uh, this project is approximately one thousand square foot renovation to the main entrance lobby of the county office building. Uh, this renovation will include replacement of the front entry lobby. Minor changes to human resources and economic development are required to accommodate the new layout. Front lobby will be equipped with touches, temperature scanners and a self-check-in kiosk. The existing floor and ceiling will be reworked to integrate, to be integrated as required to conform to the new layout. Uh, total estimated project costs are under the approved budget of seven hundred thousand and no additional funding is being, and, as, is anticipated. We are again, however, requesting your approval to allow us the ability to spend up to twenty-five percent contingency in addition to the contract price. To allow us to manage the construction changes as they occur. Uh, this will. This will allow us to keep the project on track with the expedited schedule.
How many bids should we get?
We, we got just one bid from Centennial.
Yeah, this wasn't bid for the county. This is being purchased off a national cooperative contract, which was competitively bid. But Centennial is a contractor that's familiar with projects using federal grants. There's a lot of federal requirements for this and they are well versed in that. They meet all those requirements. Plus, they use the RS means price book, so we know we're getting competitively bid set pricing on this. So it wasn't a county bid, but it was a national cooperative bid. So it was bid, just not by the county.
That answer your question, Commissioner Weaver? Okay.
Yeah, this is the same company that did the permits office renovation down on the first floor. So we're very familiar with them, very happy with their work.
What is a self check in kiosk? What is that gonna do? Does that mean we don't need anyone down in the main lobby any longer? What, what does it mean?
We don't have, we're not one hundred percent haven't been down yet. We're working with IT to get that in place. But the thought is that there should be, hopefully it'd be a station there where, you know, again, we can do the temperature scan and potentially scan the license and print a badge all in one spot.
So, so we're, we're still gonna have to have a physical presence down there.
Yes, there, there will still be a receptionist at the, at the desk. A lot of times we get a lot of visitors at one time, so the self, self check in kiosk isn't gonna do all the work. There, there will be a need for a person there as well.
Right. So we'll still have a receptionist and a deputy down there, Commissioner Frazier. I think that's where you were going with your.
Right, exactly.
Maybe talk a little bit, Eric or John, about the way in which you will now go into, you know, we've, we've mentioned the fact that it's gonna be different for economic development and HR, human resources. But they're actually gonna have different entrances. Is that right? Just a little bit of detail so folks know there about that.
Yeah, sure. So the economic development, the only way in or out, there is an exterior door, but we don't want the general public coming in, in or out the exterior door. They will still be coming in through the basement in zero zero three, get checked in by the, by the sheriff and receptionist as they normally would while we're, while we're renovating the lobby. And then there'll be escort or two, to their place.
Okay, 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 I got, I got that. What I'm more interested in is what it's gonna look like in the lobby when it's finished. Our, we're, we're used to going into the one door as soon as you come in, the lobby door and the same way at HR. So that, talk a little bit about that so we have a little bit of an idea of what that is, the, the changes are yesterday. One reason I'm asking is I was in the economic development yesterday and Lyburn's taking his five thousand six hundred and twelve plaques off the wall. So I just wanted to make sure that folks know about the, the, the entrance is gonna be different for those two departments.
Yes, so the entrance to economic development will be slightly different. It's, it's not gonna be that much different. It will be recessed and being almost the same current location. It's just gonna be more recessed. You allow the sheriff's deputy desk that will sit out further. It'll allow him visibility of the entire lobby area. The human resources area, so the new entrance, you'll, you'll come in a sliding door. You'll immediately turn right and you'll go through another sliding door rather than coming straight through like you do now. Once you make that right, you, the, the self check in kiosk will be in front of you there. And then you'll continue around, you'll, you'll, you'll have to go around the reception desk to get to the entrance of human resources with the new layout.
I heard that Mr. Lyburn is relocating all his plaques in Commissioner Wentz's office.
I don't, I don't have enough wall space, Eric, so. Okay, yeah, it's gonna be totally different down there, but the, the fact of the matter is it's gonna be one hundred and ten percent safer to get in down there. So, and if anybody hasn't used that, that self scanner to get your temperature taken, that's an awesome piece of equipment down there. It yelled at me the other day to put my mask on after I got my temperature checked. So, so kudos to, to everybody that's redesigning. I think that's gonna be a good project. Timeline on this, are we still hoping to be back with a front entrance in service and ready by the end of the year?
Yes, sir. The, the contractor has committed to us that they're, they're shooting for completion the week before Christmas.
Okay. All right, any other questions on this project?
I'd just like to state that originally there was a little bit of negative, negative publicity on this potential project as if it was unnecessary, not legal. But I think it coming about in reality has been through all the legal tests and wanna make sure the public is clear on that, that this is a perfectly legal project that we're doing and set to rest all their apprehension about this taking place.
Yeah, I think the majority of that, Commissioner, was as a result of folks thinking we were spending some sort of monies that we didn't really think we had because of our budget situation. But when we told them that it was CARES relief funding and we were actually making a lobby safer that was designed and built in the seventies, common sense would tell me that the question should have stopped and I believe that they did.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Any other on this?
With that, I'll make the motion to board of commissioners award a contract for general construction service, services to Centennial Contractors Enterprises, Inc., for the county office lot, building lobby renovation in the amount of four hundred thirty eight thousand seventy four dollars and eighty eight cents.
Second.
All right, motion in second on the lobby renovations. I'm not hearing anything else. All those in favor? And again, unanimous. Mike, Eric, thank you very much. John, again, welcome aboard. Thank you for, for, for wanting to be a part of, again, the best staff in the state of Maryland, hands down. So we're, we're, we're honored to have you, so.
Thank you. Thank you. It's an honor to be here. Appreciate it. Thank you, commissioners.
All right, you, you got your hands full. You got all kinds of projects to manage, so off you go. All right, next on our agenda is a board of building appeals for another sprinkler waiver request that we have gotten. I knew this one was coming. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jason Green, our deputy director of public works. Our bureau chief down there also informs, Mike Zep is here. And, and our county attorney, Tim Burke, is here as a result of this being another waiver request. So you wanna start this off, Tim, or you want, I'll tell you what, Jason, let's start it off with you because I think you wanna do an introduction here maybe first and then I'll turn it over to Tim.
About one question. Is property owner here to present the case?
I'll speak on that. I did finally reach him this morning. Only about a half an hour ago. He was not sure if he was gonna be able to be on my call or not. I tried for a couple of days trying to get ahold of him, but he was not able to be reached.
But, but he.
I was given the information, the call number and the access code, but he was not sure if he was gonna be able to make the call or not.
Okay, Tim, Tim, you there?
Yes.
Okay, Jason.
Well, if this was a zoning board case or, or any other kind of case, if the property owner doesn't appear to present a case, we, we don't proceed. Then the, the, the staff is not gonna argue his case for him.
Okay, that's a good point, but I, I would, I would counter by saying, as long as it's not against the procedure, this, we've already set the precedence with the last waiver request that we had, which is the same, right? So I, I don't wanna get, I don't wanna get jammed up in, in, in process or procedure here, but because the precedence has been set, I thought, I, I would assume that that would be okay. But Tim, you're, you're the legalese here, not me.
I, I thought the other matter, the, the property owner did phone in.
Yeah, he did. Go ahead, Dick.
I, I've talked to the property owner here recently. In fact, you know, it's the same process we just went through, I think up in Steve's district on this to waive the sprinklers if we don't have electric hookup. And I mean, we heard that case. It's the same case, just a little different area. And we're gonna be hearing more of them in, into the future.
Yeah, but if we're making a judgment and allowance for an exception, we shouldn't be speaking on their behalf, even if there is precedence. I think it could be very quick and I think we can judge relatively quick on this and allow it. But, you know, unless we're given that permission or they've written into it that permission, you know, I, I agree with, with Tim that, you know, staff shouldn't be speaking for him, neither should we, even though there is precedence. But, and that, that's my thought.
Act communication system is very difficult for these guys. They only have certain times or ability to get to phones or to somebody to call computers or something that very difficult to deal with. So it's not like they have access to the world the same as we do sometimes. So just keep that in mind here.
Yeah, I was gonna bring that point up too. And, and, and Michael, I think you will attest to this. When you leave a message for these guys, it can be two or three days before we get something back from them.
Yes, and I'll also say that they were given kind of an estimated time when this would take place. And then we're, I, I believe you're a little ahead of schedule as far as that is concerned as well.
Well, you wanna move this to the end of the agenda? Contact us. To be, to be very frank, I would like to have the, the person asking for this to be here or at least to be on the phone or something when we discuss this. So how about if we move on with the other agenda items and come back to this at the end and see if they, if they called us at, at that particular time?
Or if the board wished that we could, when, you know, if, if you're still in session when the applicant is able to get to us, then we take this matter up at, at that time. So it doesn't even have to wait to the end, if that makes sense.
Sure.
Mike, 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 what, what is the chances of you being able to get him on the phone?
That I don't, that I can't really answer, other than I made several attempts in the last two days and he just returned my call about thirty minutes ago.
Okay, which, which person is this? Is this the one up on Francis Scott Key Highway?
This is Broadbeck Road. This is Mr. Elam Fisher.
Okay, this is Weaver's thing. Okay, got it. Okay. All right, let, can we put this on hold? Can you see if you can get ahold of him, Mike?
I, I will certainly try, yep.
All right, Jason, since you're on here too, did you wanna introduce Mike? I mean, we, we've already asked, we've already asked Mike fifteen questions, but let, let's make this official as to who Mike Zep is, please.
Sure, sure. I wanna introduce Mike Zep, the new bureau chief of permits inspections. Mike's been with the county for fourteen years down in the bureau. He's done an excellent job down there. So I'm looking to, working with him and leading that particular department. So they got a lot of, a lot of stuff on their plate right now, but, you know, doing an exceptional job. So I just wanna introduce him today.
Thank you. Again, I can't say welcome aboard, Mike. I can just say, welcome as you continue your career. Let's put it that way, because you've been a part of our, our staff here for quite a while. I, I gotta tell, I gotta say that you, you, you have better, you have a better appearance than that Stickle's guy did. So let's, let's, let's set that stage and I, even if he's listening, I would say that, and I doubt if he is. But we're, we're, we always are appreciative of the folks that have worked their way through the ranks here in Carroll. And if we can promote one of our own, that means a lot here in our structure. So congratulations to you and we're, we're glad to have you step into that new role down there.
Thank you.
And with that being said, now you need to get Elam on the phone, so.
I'm gonna leave right here right this second and try to do that, sir.
All right, so Jason and Mike, if you would be in touch with Roberta and let us know how you're making out, we'll, we'll try to get you back on here in a moment. Okay. Jeff Daggett's, we're, we are, we are way ahead of schedule. That's the other thing that I was gonna bring up. If Elam was offered, and I'm sure he was, the opportunity to be on, he was probably given the time period of eleven fifty and we're way ahead of schedule. But Daggett's will allow you to talk for forty five minutes and that'll put us back on.
Talk about kayaks.
Talk about kayaks for forty five minutes. All right.
Next on our, our agenda is an update on upcoming rec and parks programs and events. Mr. Daggett's.
Thank you, commissioners. Good morning. As you all know, this year has been very challenging for a lot of folks in a lot of different areas. We've had people who have been inside, really looking to get out, to socialize with other people, to have activities to do. And it's been a very challenging year for our staff to try to provide activities and, and to do it in a way that's safe. And we wanna give people things to do. We wanna get them engaged, but again, we need to do it the right way. So we've had a number of events and we're learning as we go throughout the year. We've had activities that have occurred outside in the park. We've done some plein air paintings, yoga and zumba in the park and that has been well received. We've had a couple of drive through zoos. We had one in the parking lot at the Robert Moten Center and also one at Mayeski Park. And we had a couple hundred people come to each of them. That was something we had never tried before and we got some great feedback from the public on that as well. And for those of you not familiar with the drive through zoo, we had a variety of stuffed animals. We had some large archery targets that were repurposed for the zoo as people drove through and got to identify the different animals that were out there. And young children in particular really had a good time with that. Instead of offering traditional summer camps with upper camp in the bag programs, where people came by, they picked up materials and a list of activities for a camp and then they did those activities safely at home. We're looking to do some of those activities again, the fall camp in the bags. And we have those both for preschool ages and also for six to ten year olds. A couple of activities I wanted to highlight this fall. We're once again offering wagon rides at Pony Run Park. However, this year, rather than registering individuals for these rides, people register as a family. So we're keeping the family groups together and we don't have people outside of the family all sharing the same wagon. So it's real nice ride through the trails at Pony Run. They also get a campfire program as well, so they have a campfire afterwards. On October thirty first, we have a Halloween event, a trunk or treat. And that will be held at the Robert Moten Center. And people will, families will drive in in their vehicle. We will hand them a bag of goodies when they come in and there'll be a variety of Halloween themed scenes. We have different vendors and organizations setting up in our parking lot. And we're anticipating around seven hundred families coming through. We've got a number of donations of candy and other treats so far. And we're still looking for more because we're gonna need probably about a thousand bags of goodies to give out. If anyone is interested in supporting that or donating, they can contact our office and we would love that additional support. A fun event that we're having this year, we're having another virtual run. We've done a couple of these. This is a Thanksgiving theme. It's a staying alive turkey trot. So if you can picture the turkey trying to outrun whoever's after him at Thanksgiving, that's what our shirt will look like and we'll have people doing that run on their own time, in their own locations. They can do a five K, ten K, half a marathon or full marathon. So we are now accepting registrations for that. The shirt alone is worth the price of admission, getting that. It's a neat theme that our staff came up with. Pony Run still has a big fish contest underway. That starts the first of March and runs through the end of our open season, which is November thirtieth. Last year's winner, Travis Hankins, is still the top of the leaderboard. He caught a very good sized fish the first week of March. And, uh, he's still on top. So somebody's gotta beat Travis, or we're gonna be giving him a thousand-dollar check again this year. We might have to rename the contest. Instead of the Big Fish Contest, it may be the Beat Travis Contest. So we'll work on that. But best fishing at Pony Run to catch those really large ones is early in the year in March, and then also at the end of the season in November. So we encourage folks to come on out and see if you can beat Travis. And I apologize. Increase the competition.
He goes at it.
Yes, he does. On December, we have some virtual classes being offered. We've got dance classes, hip-hop, ballet, and tap dancing. I understand Commissioner Wance is best instructor for the hip-hop class, so we're all looking forward to that. Just seeing if tuning in there, just checking. Right?
Wait, wait, what?
I, I heard a motion in a second. I think that's done. Uh, we have some Lego virtual classes. We have one focusing on some STEM fundamentals and also Jedi adventures. We've got virtual classes in music and babysitter training. And we've all gotten, uh, slowly adjusted to virtual meetings like this, and doing that with our volunteer organizations and other groups that we work with. Uh, December tenth, we have our annual Santa Calling event from five to eight-thirty. Uh, we're limiting that to two hundred and fifty children this year. That's about how many folks we can get through in an evening with our volunteers. And we'll be making sure that we have people spaced out appropriately in our office and in our building. Uh, if we get more than two hundred and fifty, anyone over that, they will get a letter, but not a phone call from Santa. Because of the two fifties, the limit is what we can accommodate.
I know that Santa Weaver loves this thing.
Yeah, well, that's what I was just gonna say. Not only does Weaver love this event, but by gosh, he really looks the part now. So things hand in hand. Uh, you know, boom, boom, Santa Weaver.
I need his help to go along with me, Mr. Wance.
With the pointy ears and the pointy-toe shoes?
Don't miss Fraser. You're my next.
Okay, we have a lot of events that we really have a good time with, but that is one where you walk out at the end of the night and you just really feel good. And, uh, very enjoyable. And you get a lot of incredible feedback from the folks whose children get that call. So a lot of fun. I, we will give you all the opportunity. If, if you have time in your schedule to come out, it's a great time. Uh, very quickly, also wanted to give you an update just with the rec councils and their activities. They're continuing to operate. Uh, they're trying to, uh, uh, work with the public opinion regarding face coverings. And I've said you could take a group of any ten folks, and probably half of them feel very strongly one way, the other half feel very differently. They're trying to manage all of that, and these are volunteers doing it. Uh, it's a part of their regular coaching duties and everything else, and we're very thankful for their efforts there. Uh, we do not have any indoor use of pools. Right now, we're using, uh, school fields outside and park sites. But as we get ready to enter into basketball season and wrestling season, there are virtually no gyms within the county that are available to us. So while they may be allowed to do these activities, they're gonna be very limited as to what could actually be offered. And a number, number of them are gonna choose not to offer those programs. Now, the three gyms in the county that we have, uh, one is the South Carol County Community Center, which is closed by state order. One is the gym in our building in the Robert Moten Center. That's currently not available. We're working with Board of Elections when they finish with all of the voting activity, probably by mid-November, that gym will come online. And the other one is the North Carroll High School, which is in the process of, of being sold. So we, we anticipate that there will be some usage there for some period of time. But very limited. Couple of private facilities that may be rented out by programs also. Um, most of the councils are being virtually. That's been an adjustment for them. But they're, they're doing well. We're getting very heavy usage as we have throughout the year of our park sites, our trails, our playgrounds. People want to get outside. They want to get fresh air. Uh, as the weather gets colder, it's gonna get a little more challenging, but uh, we've had tremendous usage of the parks this year. And our two nature centers, Bear Branch Nature Center and Pony Run, they are open Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We are having programs at those sites. We have very limited registrations, and a lot of those programs are occurring outdoors. But we will try to continue that as much as we can. And again, we want to offer activities, but we want to make sure we do it safely. I would like to say thanks to a couple of folks. First of all, to our staff. Uh, at the beginning of this year, it would have been very easy to just throw up their hands and say, I don't know what the heck we're gonna do. Uh, how, how do we do this? Instead, they really were energized by it. We saw a lot of creativity from them, and I'm very appreciative of that. Uh, I mentioned our volunteers earlier. They've done a tremendous job. Uh, I've coached before. I know the challenges that go along with that. And, and trying to do that and enforce the various, uh, restrictions or modifications to programs is even more challenging. And they're still out there, and they're still doing a great job. And finally, would like to thank the public for their patience. We appreciate the support. It's nice to see them coming out and joining the parks and the programs. And, uh, we'll continue to offer these things throughout the year, and we value their feedback. Good and bad. If there's things we can improve on, we need to know, and then we'll work on it. That was a real quick summary and overview of what's going on right now. And I just wanted to share that with you, and if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Hey, Jeff, that was a good rundown. Um, and as I shared, you know, Sam is, uh, help coaching the sexual raiders thirteen under football. I know the parents and the athletes and the coaches really appreciate the work that you've been doing. Um, uh, the refs are doing a great job. You know, I've witnessed a couple of the games, and, uh, they're, they're really, everybody's kind of coming together. So, uh, really appreciate the rec program, the rec football specifically. Um, look forward to the virtual run. Actually, I'm doing a, a ten-miler on Saturday with the Army ten-miler is virtual. And all these runs are virtual these days. So Arthur, Sam, and I get to run ten miles on Saturday. Uh, so I look forward to a shorter one with the, uh, rec program. Uh, Carroll Rec. So I'll, we'll be signed up for that. So that's cool. I didn't realize you had that. And then, um, last is the dog park. The South Carroll Dog Park. I'll tell you, there are a dozen fifteen-plus dogs, you know, in the evening at any given time. And, uh, it's really well maintained. Your team is doing a great job, uh, maintaining. I know the partnership you have with, uh, the friends of the dog park. Um, and it just seems like the numbers are growing, you know, down there. So really, uh, kudos to you, uh, in getting that, that going. So, uh, I look forward to seniors here opening up. So one day, they'll be actually able to see the dog park. But yeah, it's good. Just wanna share that. Great job.
Thank you. We have over two hundred and fifty members in that dog park now. And, uh, we've just put out some information regarding, uh, a landscape and brochure. And we've had commitments and donations there. So the response from the community on this, and what's a really nice park is gonna get even better once we start to make some additional improvements.
Thanks.
Jeff, as, um, high schools open up, I think it's November twelfth, would that provide access to the gymnasiums to be wrestling and, uh, basketball?
I am not anticipating that. I would certainly welcome it, but I recognize the board of education has some significant challenges in terms of keeping those buildings clean. And it's one thing when they have, uh, a captive group, a defined audience of their students. When they open it up for community use, you have so many different people coming through there. Uh, I think it's very challenging for them uh, to try to do that and then still keep it clean and safe for the students. So at some point, we look forward to getting back in those buildings, but I think it would be premature to try to put a date on that at this point. And I'm continuing to work for a pro cop within the Board of Education, and he's our primary contact in terms of school usage. But, uh, I know they have a lot of challenges. So we're, we're trying to work through this as best we can. But there's gonna be very limited gymnasium availability this fall and winter.
Okay, now, thank you. I, as usual, the parking rec does some excellent jobs, uh, in things. I know the, the large chairs that you had out, I don't know how many years ago now, four or five years ago, there's still one in front, Green Mouse Station, and people continue to get their picture taken on it to today. Uh, I think he painted it half orange and half purple, and every time somebody, somebody sitting there taking a picture of those chairs that you auctioned off as a project. And, um, you have some very creative things you do. So, uh, keep going. I am, I'm very impressed with what parking recs does, and I'm sure you will get through this, uh, uh, gymnasium, uh, fiasco here in the near future.
Thank you.
All right, did you have, I had another item on our agenda, uh, Jeff, of talking about capital projects?
Uh, yes, I could jump right into that if you'd like.
Yeah, you might as well just keep rolling here. Uh, and then we'll, we'll wrap it up after that.
Uh, I had forty-five minutes, so I'm gonna hold you to that. Of course, I might need some extra money for some additional capital projects in order to meet the full forty-five minutes.
Don't push your luck, Daggett.
All right, we, this is actually a very busy year for capital projects. And in some ways, you know, if there was a silver lining in the cloud, the fact that we didn't have as much use of the athletic fields in the spring, it allowed us to move forward quicker and with less implications on some of these projects. Uh, the first one I'd like to talk about is Deer Park. We purchased an additional twenty acres adjacent to the park that's been there for years. That development started early this calendar year. Uh, the project includes an expansion of the walking trail. Also has a new, adjoining neighborhood, really a beautiful trail. It runs through the woods, and there's some amazing ferns. It almost looks like the land of the lost. I kind of expect a dinosaur to come out there somewhere. But the ferns are amazing. Just very, very nice. And then added two molding purpose fields there and additional parking. Parking has always been an issue with that site. Uh, the construction there is about percent complete. We have some landscaping to be done in the next couple of weeks. And a few punch list items that will be done by the end of November. We're, we've been ahead of schedule with that one all year. Finish a little bit ahead of schedule on that. So very excited about it, and great community feedback. Uh, Westminster Veterans Memorial Park, this new park on Crest Lane in Westminster. The mass grading is done. The park entrance road and parking lots have been paved, and so has the trail. And even though there's construction equipment all over the place, and the park is clearly not finished, every time I've gone there, there's at least five to ten people out on the walking trail. And we've seen that at other sites. Sometimes they don't even wait for the trail to be paved. If, if it's cut out and the stone's there, uh, it's like follow the path, and they just jump right on. So we have no doubt that that's gonna get a tremendous amount of usage. A pavilion has been ordered for that site. That will be going in either late fall or during the winter months. There'll be a playground there that will be installed in the spring. Uh, we have had some challenges with a lot, a lot of trees that were dead or dying. And, uh, we had to take down a, a lot of what was screening for neighbors. So some folks had some concerns about that. They were disappointed that a lot of it came down, a few of the vines that were choking out trees. So if you can imagine Wrigley Field and taking the, the ivy off of the outfield wall, that's what some people feel they lost, I think, in their backyards. So we were able to save some trees, and those trees will do much better now that the vines have been removed. And then we'll be doing some additional landscaping as well to help provide that buffer. That is also scheduled to be completed at the end of November, and, uh, I, I think we'll be on target. The projects going very well. There will be a future memorial area. Uh, it is yet to be determined whether we're doing a monument or some memorial garden. Uh, we'll be reaching out to the Veterans Advisory Council and other veterans groups, uh, to get some input on that. Uh, we've heard some feedback already. Some people like monuments, some people not so much. Gardens offer a nice peaceful opportunity or alternative. So we'd like to hear from those veteran groups what they would like to see. And that'll be the last phase of that project. That will actually happen beginning next year. Uh, Gillis Falls Trail, this is phase one of a two-phase project. This is a walking trail that will connect between the Carroll County Equestrian Center on Grimville Road and go up to Salt Box Park and Gillis Falls Road. It's about a mile long. Uh, some of that trail is there and has been there for years. Camp Woodbrook, uh, road, entrance road. This project was very far along in the design back in two thousand and six. And then it got set aside because of some discussions about possibly building a reservoir there, which is why a lot of that property was purchased initially. We brought that project back because of the demand for trails. Of course, a lot of regulations have changed since two thousand and six. So we're working with a design plan and, uh, trying to bring that back up to the current standards, and then we'll be going through the planning commission process for that. Looking for construction on that to initiate next year. And at any point during this, if you have questions about projects, just jump in. Otherwise, I'll keep going. Winfield Park is just about complete. That's opposite Winfield Elementary on Salem Bottom Road. Uh, the last few items that we have, the park entrance sign has been ordered, but not yet installed. And we're getting some additional ball mix for the site. But at that point, that project will be completed. We've had somewhere between half a million and a million dollars worth of material and labor donated to this project. Now, this, this started with a sixty thousand dollar commitment from the past Board of Commissioners to get this underway and see what you can do with donations. Uh, we've never had a project like this. This never showed up in the CIP. Uh, this was funded almost entirely through those contractor donations. Uh, we had Kinsley Construction, M.T. Laney and C.J. Miller were all involved with various projects in the vicinity. They all had large amounts of dirt that they needed to get rid of. And we had a great need for a lot of that filter to try to level the site. So they brought it to grade. It's all been seeded. The backstop has been installed, and we have one ball guide in there. We also received a donation of fifteen thousand dollars from the Nathan Chris Baker Foundation, which was used to help that as well. And the Winfield Rec Council has been very involved in that project with volunteer labor, and they've also uh, submitted a self-help project and, and completed that there. So very unique project and very successful project that we're proud of. Double Pipe Creek Park. Uh, Mr. Boucher and I were, were out there earlier this week. And, uh, as I saw the photos this morning, and you got to see what the kayak launch looks like, the stairs going down to the water. It's a lot safer and easier than how you used to have to get down there. And, uh, really a beautiful sight. And that ramp is just about done. The launch area, you just have to put in some rails so that you can pull your kayak up that center section between the stairs. But greatly improved access there. And we have two other locations that are directly related to that. The launch area, Mill Road, and another one, we're in Union Bridge on Locust Avenue. And for each of those sites, we're working with, because we're so close to the stream, we need to make sure we go through the proper steps in terms of permitting, and we're actually asking for exemptions. Uh, because the development is so minimal, we're looking at about a five-car parking lot. And once those are done, uh, the Union Bridge site will be about nine miles from there down Little Pipe Creek to Detour. The one at Hape Smell is about eight miles now from there down to Detour, where the two Big Pipe and Little Pipe form Double Pipe Creek near the park. So kayaking is becoming popular with all ages. We anticipate that that's gonna get a tremendous amount of usage and hopefully bring some economic development to the county Union Bridge as well. The folks stopping there for a meal, uh, before they go down.
Director Daggett, thanks for the tour of those sites. And I'm, I'm glad you mentioned the economic development, because I think it's gonna be very critical for that section of our county to get people going out there. They can patronize the local restaurants. So it's a very big positive, not only for recreation, but for the economy. And if there's a groundbreaking ceremony for this Gillis Falls Trail, I know a chipmunk that might show up. And if there's a groundbreaking ceremony for this Gillis Falls Trail, I know a chipmunk that might show up.
Actually, down at Gillis Falls, just about every time I've gone down there, there's a couple of turkey vultures who were uh, sitting in the same place. It's almost a little eerie. It's like they're waiting for me, so.
As long as they don't eat chipmunks.
All right, the last item that I wanted to bring up was a two-part project up at the Carroll County Sports Complex. We finished relamping the three softball fields that do have lights. We put LED lighting in last year. Got a lot of good feedback from the users at the park. Uh, the lighting quality is much better than it was before, and has much less impact on neighbors, and the players are very happy with it as well. The improved quality is definitely noticeable. Uh, the second phase of that project, we have funding in the current fiscal year, and during this winter, we'll be bidding out lights for one of the soccer fields there. And so that will be a new addition. We've never had lights on the soccer field. That will give us some extended hours of play there, particularly this time of year, soccer season, you start to lose daylight very early. So that will help meet demands both in that community and from other groups coming in there. The vast majority of the funding for all of these projects, with the exception of Winfield Park where there were so many donations, vast majority is program open space money. When there are new facilities, like an expansion of Deer Park or adding lights where there were no lights before, we're able to use impact fees for those. There are minimal general fund dollars, and usually it's a required amount to get a match, so you can use the program open space funds. Also, the Gillis Falls project is supported by a couple hundred thousand dollars in the recreational trails program grant as well. So we try to be uh, very creative with how we can leverage these dollars and uh, go as far as we can for the money that's available. But much of this funding can only be used for park improvements. So we're trying to use it the best way we can to meet the demands of the citizens. And that's it for my list of, of projects to update you on today. Do you have any questions? I'll be happy to take them.
I was gonna say, Commissioner West was kidding when he said you could take forty-five minutes.
Yeah, I kinda. All right, any, any questions on any of those projects for Jeff? I will tell you, Jeff, that in the night sky, the new LED lighting at the Carroll County Sports Complex is completely different. Uh, a lot of folks that live around there used to uh, label it as the field of dreams because on a clear night, when the lights were lit over there, you can see it from, I think, the space station. Um, but that certainly has changed a little bit now. Those things are so focused that uh, that big glow that typically we see up there is, is kinda nonexistent right now, so well done on that LED lighting. Uh, anything else for Jeff on the projects or anything that he's discussed in the last hour and fifteen minutes? Or, I'm sorry, forty minutes? All right, hearing nothing, Jeff. Thank you very much. We appreciate uh, appreciate you bringing this up to date, especially in uh, in COVID time. Uh, it's, it's good to hear uh, some positive news on how great these, the uh, Park and Rec's activities continue to go, and uh, you guys are doing a yeoman's job over there. So kudos to everyone that's involved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll share that with our staff. We appreciate it.
Okay, uh, have not heard, as I figured we wouldn't, from uh, the gentleman who is asking for the waiver on his sprinkler system up there. Mike, I asked Jason off the air, but I'll ask you to, uh, if we delay this a week and confirm that we can get him on the schedule for Thursday next week, do you see a problem uh, in a week's delay here for his overall project?
No, I, I do not. I spoke with um, Mr. Fisher this morning, and, and there's some, actually, we're gonna meet out once like, uh, next week, on Tuesday, I believe, uh, if that works for him. Um, he's gonna let me know, uh, to discuss some other things, items out there. So no, I don't, I don't believe it's going to hold up the process at this time.
Okay, with that being said, Roberta, if we can try, if you can get uh, hooked up with, with Jason and Mike and get uh, a time, which I kinda like to do it at the beginning of the session, uh, you know, respecting the schedules that our Amish community has, because uh, you know, nine, nine o'clock to them, they're, they've already worked about four hours, so uh, can we, can we make that work for next Thursday?
What I was going to suggest, um, yes, certainly, but I was gonna suggest is maybe we set it in at nine o'clock, and then after you open with the prep pledge and the moment of silence, before you do priority carol or anything else, you just um, go to that, so we can give him as much of a time certain as we, uh, certain as we possibly can.
Is that all right with everybody? I'm seeing nods, so yeah, that'll work.
Steve, while, while we're doing this, and Jason, uh, you're on here, as was Mike, um, perhaps, you know, we need to make a uniform change in our code here uh, to address this. If it's not electric up to the building, in parallel, the state uh, law on this, or state guideline that we don't require sprinklers in there, and that would take away um, the, these cases uh, as they pop up, uh, I think we will be seeing some more of them in Carroll County. I don't think a lot, but maybe a total of ten. Uh, instead of a case by case, follow the state guidelines and uh, make that uh, change eventually.
Commissioner Weaver, we had this discussion, I don't have any minds ago, but we talked about that exact same thing, and we all agreed to take it as a case by case as it came up at that time, because at that time, we could have said, i- if it meets this criteria, automatically they don't need sprinklers or whatever, but we decided at that time, as the Board of Commissioners, to take it with a case by case. I think we should stick to that.
We don't have a lot of them here in the future. Just be.
That's what we're here for.
Exactly, and I, I agree. It should be case by case. I, I do not wanna make a blanket statement on this, um, because it can also send a message that that's, you know, a place for Carroll County for folks to come into uh, to get these, you know, these uh, issues waived. Not saying that they're not going to get them waived, but it should be a very deliberate case by case, and I don't think it should take that much time, so. Um, I think that was the decision we made, and I just wanna continue it.
So I'm on the fence on this one. You guys know how I feel about sprinkler systems. I don't wanna do anything to uh, put a wrench in the works when it comes to them, but in these instances, we really have to be respectful of uh, the beliefs and the way in which these uh, Amish families roll. So I, I don't, I, while I agree with you, Dick, again, I'm, wanna make sure that you know I'm on the fence here. I think it would be easier for us to do, but I don't also wanna make a statement blanket-wise when it comes to sprinkler systems because I feel so strongly about them. So I'm comfortable with case by case. Uh, I know that I've got one coming up, which is why I questioned it this morning because uh, I've had another one, and I'm, Mike, I think you know this. I had another one up on Francis Scott Key Highway that reached out to me, and I, I, I put him in touch with you. So we're gonna have another one there, I know, so. While, while I think that would be easier for us, Dick, I think, I, I see the importance of case by case as well, so. Thought, thought, Mike, you and Jason, I mean, this is on you too.
Yeah, I'll just mention that this particular case is different because we're dealing with an existing house that was completely gutted, and additions were added, so it's not a straight-up new residence. So there are some other um, code deficiencies in the house uh, with regards to it being an existing versus a brand-new house. So that's, I think this is a different case.
Well, then, that probably is even more reason to case by case it, because that, that's, that's a very valid point, so. So I'm good with it. Dick, you okay with that?
Yeah, I uh, just was trying to simplify codes coming in for permits, uh, anything to simplify the process, and this just, you know, whatever. I'm not, I just a thought.
All right, with that being said, let's roll with that. Let's try to get him on at nine AM next week. Uh, since you guys are gonna be site visiting, that ought to be easy to be able to do, so you make sure he's got the right connection uh, so he can roll in here. Any other thoughts on this one? All right, Mike, Jason, thank you, and again, Mike, congratulations on your new role, and we look forward to beating you up down in permits for the next two years. How about that? All right, talk soon. Thank you. All right, with that being said, we have reached the end of our agendas uh, for today, agenda items. Uh, we are going to have, we, we are going to be going into closed uh, for some personnel and boards and commission. No, just boards and commission, sorry. I looked at it wrong.
No, no, it's just closed admins. It's closed admin.
Oh, okay. I've got listed on here, boards. Never mind. Okay, closed admin. I've been corrected. That's twice in one day.
You're slipping.
I'm slipping. All right, what do we have for open admin? Anything for open admin?
I'd like to uh, bring to Mr. Zaleski's attention, see if he can talk in the future about the concern the state financial representatives have about the impact potentially of forthcoming foreclosures and evictions. Because eventually, I think they've determined that aid funding from the federal government, which has been stalling this, will eventually run out, and you see it forthcoming as impacting the state. And I was wondering if sometime in the future, Mr. Zaleski, after doing some research, can brief us on the potential impact it has on us as a county. If the state's concerned, I think we should be concerned as well, and if we should be preparing for and how it'd impact our, our budget in the future. And the second thing, I'll preface this with, I don't want anyone to take offense to this, but I'd like for Mr. Burke to research and brief us on the potential conflict of interest of the board president voting on the state of emergency extension. And the reason I state this is on a political science term that in counties that are independent, have a separate executive and legislative branch. When there's a state of emergency, it expands the authority of the executive. Therefore, it is the legislative branch that votes to renew the extension, and that the person who benefits from the state of emergency in no way votes on it, that strictly the legislative branch is responsible to vote on that to avoid the conflict of interest, just like we as commissioners don't vote on giving ourselves raises. So there is a potential political science conflict that the individual on this board, whose power is expanded on that vote, gets to vote on the expansion of that power, and I'll state that in no way does this mean that our board president has done anything unethical or has been leading this board in any way inappropriate, but it's just a technical glitch that I think that we should be briefed on. Maybe Mr. Burke can come forward and talk about both the statute and some case law surrounding this, and that whether there's a potential, we should address this with some form of legislative proposal to a delegation. The, after our last vote of extension was a three-two vote, and it's clear that the deciding vote was made by the individual who gets the expansion of power. And once again, I'll preface this. Go ahead.
Commissioner, if I may, it doesn't work that way here. There is no expansion of power on, by the, the state of emergency is, is merely that, there is no expansion of power of, by the president of the board. So um, we'll, we'll provide you again with a copy of the, of the state of emergency and what it offers. Um, and so, you know, we can, we can have to.
No conflict of interest.
Right, there, and a conflict of interest on, is related to a financial interest, um, and there is no, there is no such financial interest.
Then why in counties?
It's no different than someone being able to vote for themselves for, speaking of the House.
Then why in counties that have separate executive and legislative branches, the executive has no influence upon the vote, and strictly the legislative arm does?
I think you'd have to look at their charters.
Well, I'm looking forward to potentially Mr. Burke coming forward and brief us all, because I think it, not only in, in my concern, but I think there's a public concern of this interest, and as public servants, I think we should openly discuss this in front of the public. Thank you.
See, we had Charlie go, this wouldn't be a problem.
Correct.
Don't, you know, Eric, I don't um, I appreciate you wanting to do that, but in the same breath that, you know, we've received advice and direction, that there are no policies that we are following when it comes to what the state administration has provided, what the governor has directed and his administration regarding masks, social distancing, occupancy. These aren't policies, these are laws, and the challenge is that the jurisdictions, the, the counties, we do not have the opportunity to change those laws. We have the opportunity to adhere to them or be more restrictive uh, regarding them, and we as a, a board commissioner, since day one, have been very proactive to open up our economy faster and stronger, and I really do applaud Commissioner Frazier for taking the lead on that, especially when it came to restaurants early on. So we've been pushing with uh, recommendations, but um, as far as what we are allowed and not allowed to do, there's no policies. It's the law uh, when it comes to these things that the, that the governor has directed. Um, regarding the state of emergency, I believe, and, and we can not, we can have a further discussion, is or less to any one individual. It just allows us to be more aggressive uh, during this, this situation. Like, we can, we can definitely have that conversation with Mr. Burke online, so.
Yep, my, my question, uh, had nothing to do with policy. It was just about the tactical aspect of a possible conflict of interest on the vote, and that's it.
Okay. Commissioner, we, we now have a caller. That may be the gentleman, if we, we can try to get Commissioner Mike and if it is on, in fact, our applicant, if you'd like to.
Yeah, hold on a second. We, let's, let's stop our open admin discussion. Who, can, can the caller that's on the line identify themselves for us?
Elam Fisher.
Hello.
Eighteen hundred Broadback Road.
Yes, sir. Stay, stay right where you are. We're gonna bring.
Okay.
Uh, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get out of, of line here with policy and procedure again, because apparently I get questioned on that a good bit, but um, are we okay bringing this back up again with the open meetings?
Yes, it's on your, go ahead, Tim.
Yes, this is gonna be an open meeting, so we're good.
All right, um, with that said, uh, let's stop open admin. Let's back up to uh, that agenda item, which is a waiver request for a sprinkler system, and Mike, are you on here again? Or Jason? Yeah, let me, Mike. Okay, Mike, I've got you. Uh, Elam, stand by. Uh, Mike, I'm gonna let him in his charge. Uh, tell us what we're doing here, and then we'll hear from Elam. Tim, is that the right way to go with this uh, with this waiver request? Yep, thumbs up. Mike, uh, again, good morning to you. Actually, it's afternoon now. Good afternoon. So we've got a waiver request, request. Our Bureau Chief of Permits, Mike Zep.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, good morning again. Um, yeah, the specific case requiring a sprinkler system is a separate uh, from the state requirements uh, for new dwellings. Uh, it is out of Chapter one seventy, uh, our local ordinance requires this. Um, based on the level of renovations, the additions being constructed on the site, they did require sprinklers. Uh, so I did review the submitted application and, and mid-rough plans, and after a uh, site visit, I did confirm that it doesn't fall under current sprinkler requirements required by chapter ones. The, the, uh, the house is currently in the framing stage. Um, I'm wanna uh, verify with Mr. Fisher, but uh, it appears to be about uh, three or four bedrooms planned. Uh, they are located in the existing uh, house, not in the additions, it appears. Uh, none of the windows observed would meet the current requirements for emergency escape rescue openings. Uh, so in cases like this, typically uh, with this, this sprinkler system being installed, uh, we would not typically require existing windows to be upgraded. Should, should you approve this request, we, we would recommend requiring these windows to be upgraded to ensure. Should, should you approve this request? We would recommend requiring these windows to be upgraded to ensure proper emergency egress. Yep. That's a brief background. Anybody have any questions?
Are these bedrooms in the basement?
No, they are. I can let Mr. Fisher answer that.
Yes, good morning. Elam Fisher speaking. Thank you for letting me be the part here. The bedrooms are in the upstairs in the existing building.
Okay. Thanks, Elam. Any other? Anybody that has any questions for Elam, let's open it up now and get, since he's on here. Questions for Mr. Fisher?
What are the size of the windows that are currently in the bedroom? Or there, there's, my guess is from reading this that they're so small, someone couldn't get out in an emergency. Is that? Is that what we're saying, Mike?
Well, we've been crawling in and out. So, no, they're not that, they're not that small. I don't have exact measurements. Like I said, it's it's windows that were there.
At the site visit, I did measure the windows. The current requirement is 5.7 square feet of clear opening. The windows that I measured on site were four square feet. Does put 1.7.
Okay. Mr. Fisher, I've got a question. You're, you're not, you're, you're clearly not going to have any electricity to this residence. Is that correct?
No, this will be a non-electric residence. There's no line going into the house and there won't be any electric, any outlets in the whole, in the whole house. No wiring, anything.
And are you going to, to use an alternate source for providing cooking or what have you?
There will be everything non-electric appliances.
Okay, so what, what's your alternate source? Propane? What, what do you, what do you?
Yeah, propane, propane oven, gas oven. And then a coal stove for heating.
Okay. How many, how many bedrooms are we talking about in this residence, Mr. Fisher?
There's there are three, three bedrooms and one storage room in the existing building.
Okay. Dick, I see your microphones on. Questions from you. This is in your district. Commissioner Weaver?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions. I told Elam before on these and I just he's here now. I I think I've discussed everything with him. We need this point stuff to move to make.
Okay. Mike and Jason, or whichever one wants to take this one, and you're, you're the professionals here. And your humble opinions. You, you don't have a problem. This is a very similar case that we had on the first one in my district on Humbert Schoolhouse. And you're, you're, you're you're, you're good with the way in which you will be requiring exiting and what have you with no sprinklers in this residence.
I'll take that one. I think for us it does, it will meet all the other specifications that you, as you would have in a new house. So if the windows are upgraded, obviously would have interconnecting smoke detectors and things like that through battery operated ones. So would have those other additional safety features. I don't want to say one way or the other, whether we, you know, would support not putting in the sprinkler system. Obviously, the code requires it. So that's kind of where our stance is. We'd be up the board and make that determination whether they want to waive it. But the other safety features will be in place.
So you're suggesting upgrading the windows. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Will the house have fire extinguishers?
Mr. Fisher?
Not required.
Yes, we we will supply fire extinguishers throughout the house.
And, and Mike?
And smoke detectors, heat detectors, carbon dioxide detectors.
Right, which will all be battery operated, of course.
Right.
Mike, you're, you were kind of covered on that, that, the technical, the technical part of that question. Reference to fire extinguishers. Say that again.
The code would not require fire extinguishers in residential dwellings, with your family dwellings. That'd be up to the occupants, if they willing to provide that if they chose to.
Okay. Well, just, just as we did with, with Mr. Lapp, Mr. Fisher, and you're familiar because you and I have talked too.
Right.
We, we would certainly 110% recommend that you put all best practices in place when it comes to extinguishers and your, your detecting system and that, and that type of thing. So I think that's clearly very important. And it is your, it is, it is your, your thoughts that you are indeed going to make that, make that happen.
That is certainly our, yeah. I mean, it's what we're used to doing. And that's very important for us as well. Even in PA, if we're not required for those or not. I mean, it's a, it's a practice that we definitely follow.
Okay. Any other questions for Mike, Jason, or Elam Fisher?
Mr. Fisher, is there, are you anticipating making the windows larger? Are you, are you want to keep them where they are? So that's, that's why I'm having my, my problem with obviously is that the windows don't meet the code specifications for people have to get out in an emergency. And when I look at stuff like this, I, I look at you're not doing it just for the people that are occupying the house now. It's for other people as well. And so anyway, just, are you anticipating making the windows larger? Are you, are you trying to keep them the same, the same square feet that they are right now?
Well, we have all exterior done, so it's not that we were, I had no idea that that is actually required. I mean, as far as the new addition, there we put an egress window in, but it's not a bedroom, but it's still from the upstairs. So it's not something that I really had in mind. I guess I was, you know, I wasn't informed that that it's needed or anything.
So there was no I'm guessing you had to pull a permit to do the renovation work and everything that, that you've done. And on that permit, there was not, there's nothing in there about window sizes?
Not except for the new addition that we put on. There, we had to put a big window in. Yeah, no, no other windows were you know, was mentioned on that permit.
If I can just answer that specific thing, Commissioner Frazier, when the application was put in on the plans, it was stamped that the sprinkler system would be required. So the sprinkler system really took precedence over the requirement to change those windows. But now that that's being considered, that comes back into play.
Okay. Thank you, Jason.
Hey, Mike, touch, touch on the, the, the the dimensions of the windows again. I, I think I heard what you said, but just touch on that again for us. What's the requirement and what these are?
Okay, yes, the requirement for an emergency escape rescue opening would be 5.7 square feet on the second floor. These windows currently are 24 by 24. And it comes up to four square feet. 24 inch by 24 inch.
Okay. So, so we're, 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 we're down about a foot, square feet. We're down about one square foot. Is that right? Math correct there, kind of?
1.7, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it'd be almost 50% larger than what it is right now.
I don't believe it's 50%.
Well, you're going from four square feet to, so you're almost six. So yeah, that's another 50%.
Would someone be able to actually get out that window? That's the concern, right?
Well, yeah, that is a concern. Someone can get out the window. And like I said, when you're looking at these, these building requirements and safety requirements, you're not looking right now, of course you are, but you're not really looking at just the people that are occupying the house right now or when it's finished. What happens 10, 15, 20 years down the road, someone else might be in that house. Are they going to, I, I, that's what, that's why, you know, safety measures are put into place. For the people that are coming in afterwards, if someone else takes that house. And I don't know what the likelihood of that is, but you have to look at that when, when you're making these kinds of decisions that are basically for safety.
I have to agree in that sense that, you know, I'm okay with not having the sprinkler system since there's always smoke detectors and fire extinguishers. But if a person in that house is faced with a situation where they're trapped in their room, heaven forbid, they would not be able to evacuate that room to safety out the window. You know, that's not, that's what we're trying to prevent.
Right.
So I think the window issue is a very important issue that would need to be addressed. I know that as a child, my father put a ladder system together so us children could get out the second window. It never happened, thank goodness.
But he never put it by your window, did he?
But you, I, I, I'm, I'm in agreement with you about the window. You know, I'd have to have some reassurance that a person could get out the window. Until actually
I can assure that if you want me to assure it, but you know, I don't want to speak if it's not, if you're not asking me to speak.
Commissioner, if I could just add to that too, the, the window size is also relevant in regards to firefighter safety. So they do, that size is calculated out for putting a ladder up to the window, potentially a firefighter having an apparatus on their back. So it's more than just, you know, whether it's a children's bedroom or adult's bedroom, there's also firefighting implications.
That, that's a very good point. There's two reasons that that window would need to be enlarged.
Is there, is there a window, is there a window in each of the three bedrooms that could be retrofitted to meet what we're discussing here?
So, yeah, so they're asking for the, Commissioner Frazier, you were asking for the calculation earlier. Based on the 24 inch by 24 inch, if you were to take, leave one of the 24 inch dimensions aligned, you would need approximately 11 more inches in, in the other direction to, to achieve the three or the 5.7. And the requirement is that only one window per bedroom meet the requirement, not all the windows.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, so I get a, I get a sense here that, that, and listen, I'm not going to argue the fact about egress in order to get into, in or out of that, that bedroom. I think it's very important. So I get a sense that we're leaning in that direction to, to grant the waiver if if each of the bedrooms has the right, right size window. Is that kind of where we're at here?
That's what I'm looking at, to be honest with you.
And again, I think to be, to be clear, this is a little bit of a different situation than we had with the first waiver request because that was brand new construction. This one adds another level of challenge as a result of there's an existing building that needs to, I think, meet, meet, meet that code. And I, I truly think that's very important. So any other thoughts on this? Questions?
Regarding the windows, when it was built, was it built to code? Or no?
They asked, it was an old farm style house. So there weren't a lot of codes and even developed at that point in time.
Okay.
It's probably an old farmhouse that's been there for a long time. So it's back in those days. Well, wait a minute, Weaver would know.
Pick an old Weaver.
You know, it is an older farmhouse. So what you're recommending is one window per bedroom be expanded, Steve?
Yeah, I think that's the general consensus here, Dick. And I think that makes a lot of common sense here. You know, the sprinkler system is there for a reason. And if that, if it's not there and that reason has been taken away, then I think we've got to make an effort to make sure that the secondary importance is put on and placed on the fact that they need to get in and out of there and with ease. And, you know, not not something that, that would, well, it's close, but yet it's not. And I don't want to be the one, if something would happen there, saying, well, we thought it was close, but it was not. I don't want to be the one saying that. And I think that's exactly what you're saying, Dennis.
Yes, yep. And with that, I'd like to make the motion to board commissioners, grant the appeal, allow for an exception to the sprinkler mandate, and require the applicant, the applicant to install code compliant emergency egress windows in all bedrooms.
Second.
Is that only one sizable window per bedroom or is that all bedroom windows?
One per bedroom. Of course, they could make them all the same size and make them look good from the outside, but that's up to them.
Okay. Any other questions on this waiver request?
Is this agreeable with the
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
So
I didn't hear.
Okay, so the, the, the decision here that we're getting ready to make is that you will be granted the waiver request for the sprinkler system, but you would need to bring a window in each of those bedrooms up to the proper code.
Okay.
And the question to you from Commissioner Weaver was whether or not that you would agree to that.
Yes, I think that's common sense. I really, I really do. You know, it's an older farmhouse. There are smaller windows that anybody would put in on a, on a new dwelling. I hadn't given it a thought. It's not that we can't get in and out, you know, easy for me, but I do see your, your concerns as far as a firefighter, you know, with their, with their equipment and so on. So I would be more than willing to go forward with that if, if that's the way you feel about it. If we can have the waiver on the, on the sprinkler.
Okay, Dick, that answer your question correctly? Okay, Dick's good. All right. Anything else on this one?
Commissioner, if I could just add one thing, just, just for the record, the code would only require one window to be accessible. So I just want to make that clear for the public. That it doesn't require all windows. It would only just require one window in each bedroom. So just wanted to make that clear.
Right, okay.
Still clear.
Okay. All right. Got a motion and second. All those in favor? And that is unanimous. So, Mr. Fisher, we appreciate you stopping your work day to come on. Thank you very much. Mike and Jason, thank you as well. I think you've got your, the, the, the right right decision moving forward here. And certainly, Mike, you'll, I think you said you were going to have a site visit up there anyway. You'll make sure that that's added to the permitting process and we'll move from there. Everybody good? Okay, Mr. Fisher, thank you very much.
I thank you for your time. I greatly appreciate it.
All right, take care.
You have a good day. Bye.
All right. With that being said, I believe now we are again at the end of our agenda. And we'll go back into open admin. Anything else for open admin?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
All right, I was, as I said yesterday, at the Farm Museum meeting out there, and they are in the process of trying to get a grant to replace the open pavilion out there. And I don't know if you're aware, they had to take the stage off of it. It was rotting away, somebody went through it, and they have to, they grassed that area and seeded it and removed the stage from the pavilion. They're in the process of working on grants now to get most of the money to deal with that. And I started asking questions how much that is, and that's anywhere from a hundred thousand to, if you use the county's total, five hundred thousand. So it's all over the place. Most of the beds are coming in, a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty, something like that. Just this is pavilion only. If they get a grant, is there a possibility that the county be willing to put, it's just county-owned property, to put some money into it to help them get to the point if they needed supplemental funds to build this facility?
You're talking about the Farm Museum, Dick?
Yes, yes.
Didn't we discuss this, I don't know, six months ago about the pavilion out there? And that we gave them X amount of dollars, I'm thinking somewhere around a hundred thousand, if my mind is correct on that. It might not have been, but maybe sixty thousand, somewhere. They gave us some money on that. And we were told at that time that the additional money would be, come from some type of fundraiser or something. I think Jack weighed in on that and he might have the particulars on that because I know we've already discussed this.
No. We talked about building the whole pavilion at that point. They are working on the grants and those things, and I'm wondering, and I was just at the meeting yesterday, Jack wasn't there, but I was asking, you know, they get close to this, wouldn't we be able to supplement some of the funds? And I was asking the board here, I told them I'd bring it up today.
You mean besides the sixty thousand, a hundred thousand, or whatever the number is, I think it's sixty now, I think about it, that we're already giving? You wanted, they're asking for additional funding besides that? Or Roberta keeps shaking her head, am I wrong about funding, Roberta?
Right, if we're all talking about the same project, the Economic Development came to the board back in the late winter, February, early March timeframe with the request to go to apply for a grant to the Heart of the Civil War Heritage area and during, to pay for the pavilion. The board had an extensive conversation at that time about the, they were all, you all appeared fine with going for the grant, but then if there was any additional money, I think this is what you're remembering, Commissioner Frazier, then Economic Development said that they would not use county funds in any way, shape, or form, and that they would fundraise for it. I'm guessing, based on Commissioner Vance, Weaver's conversation, that they were not successful in obtaining the Heart of the Civil War Heritage Grant and now are looking for other grants, but maybe those grants are not as lucrative as the one that was being applied for at that time and therefore to create, to fulfill the project, they would need more funding than they had anticipated.
That's basically it, Roberta. The funds, the grant, we don't know about it yet. And then we're just asking, if it gets closed, would that be a possibility? So they would have it in place for next spring when they open up again. Apparently, it's, it's going to have, we're going to have to replace something anyway or raise it anyway in the future. So I was just asking, proposal forward, would we be willing to add supplemental to it if they get the grant?
Did they request a bond bill on this last year or something of that sort as well?
Not that I recall.
I don't think so. We could bond it, it's...
I'm getting confused on that one, but okay.
No, what I think Commissioner Frazier's referring to is a state bond bill, which is basically just money provided to local jurisdictions for projects in their jurisdiction from this General Assembly. It's not suggesting county. But may I suggest that this become an agenda item? If the Economic Development is ready to apply for any grants, they should bring that to the Board of County Commissioners for award and acceptance and have the discussion at that time about any additional funding. So I'll work with Economic Development, if that's okay with the board, to put that in place when and if they become ready for actual application for projects.
That's reasonable, I just wanted to bring it up. The, we're going to have to do something there in the future. It's our property, basically, so we're going to, you know, if we're going to have people in it and in around the museum next year when it opens up, we hope, we're going to have to be prepared.
Right, I mean, I agree. I think if something needs to be done, we have to look at it and doing whatever happens to be to make this, you know, safe and, I guess, good for the people that come in to use it. But I also think we need to put it on the agenda so we all have the right background information because apparently what's going through my mind is not a hundred percent correct. It does happen sometimes. So we all have to get the right information here, so...
Old wrestling injury.
One too many cross faces, is all I can say.
Okay. We'll get that on the agenda. Anybody else have any open admin before mine? Okay. Dick, you and I had a conversation earlier in the week about fees for permitting in reference to some ag projects that go on in the county. You had engaged in some discussion and put together a work group down there with permits and some builders and what have you. I'd like to look into that again to see if there is a way that we could make some sort of movement in our ag community for a lesser amount on the permits or what have you. This came to light, I've got a very large commercial grower in my district up near the Carroll Frederick County line, and the gentleman or the company up there is putting up another very large greenhouse up there. And his permitting fees are approaching almost twenty thousand dollars. And it's, I think it's twenty, twenty cents per square foot, I believe, Dick, if I'm correct on that. And if they're, if they're considered ag instead of commercial, I think there's a difference in fees there. But what I'd like to do is, I'm not asking for a decision here, I'm just asking for staff or Dick, perhaps with you, which is why I brought you up, to engage that group again to see if there's something that could be done when it comes to these type of facilities. Your thoughts?
As we look through the Code Enforcement Committee that had set up before, if they file a 1040F, which is a farm form, they fall under farm, basically classification, which is a hundred dollar building fee on that. If they have that, there shouldn't be any problem. I think the problem rests in they may be, I don't know if they're considering themselves commercial or agricultural and how they've been dealing with it. But a greenhouse is not a permanent structure. So I don't know how we have to, we're going to have to deal with that one here in the future. They are, are they glass houses they're putting up, though?
I believe so, Dick, yes. I think the rest of them are up there, I think.
If they're glass is one thing, I think it'd be more permanent. If they're polygal or one of the other structures, they're not permanent.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what they're putting up. I would assume technology's driving what they're putting up.
I would reach out to them and ask them if they file a 1040F. That's the determining factor that is used everywhere in the State Farm Bureau, everybody uses it. Tags on vehicles for K tags, if they have a 1040F, they can get it. Without it, no way. As far as state taxes assessments, here again, a 1040F is a determining factor. So you might reach out to them, and if they're filing that, it's a no-brainer.
I think this is a very important issue. I appreciate my colleagues bringing this up because it was brought to my attention by one of my constituents, Mr. Huff's Farm, when he put a greenhouse up. So not only with the permits, but I think we need to look into the tax assessments because I think it might put an undue burden upon our farmers to do these agricultural buildings that are basically temporary and can be pulled down, but yet it's inflating their property tax rate, which goes counter to the agricultural lower rate. So in that discussion, I'd really like to get involved in looking at the property tax assessments on our farmers as well and how we can help them out. Especially want to thank Commissioner Weaver for bringing it to my attention back when I first got elected about the Huff Farm because he was the one that turned me on to this issue.
All right, maybe we could just make it a briefing-type thing for a future agenda item, just to get us the if, stands, what's, how to, and whatever. You know, again, make it another agenda item if everybody's in agreement with that.
Right, okay, I can certainly have staff prepare that. Just to Commissioner Boucher's comment, the county doesn't handle tax assessments. The assessment is determined by the State Department of Assessments and Taxation. So we wouldn't determine the property value.
Understood, but I think it's important to have a public discussion as activists, so to speak, from a county level and try to provide some leadership and assistance and guidance to these farmers.
I was coming at it more from a permitting standpoint here. I wasn't getting into the SSTAT then, I can tell you, because I'm not interested in getting involved with those folks. I'd merely like to keep it home here. No disrespect to any of the SSTAT folks that are listed, SSTAT folks that are listed. That's a tangled web we weave when we get involved with that group. So my focus was on the permitting and the associated fees as it pertains to these various agricultural venues that do this type of construction. And also to see if in our permits and in the ordinances or whatever, we have a specific category for greenhouses. Because I'm not sure that that is true either. And as you say, Dick, with the fact that they're not really considered permanent based on the construction, that could be something that we would maybe want to look at, too. I don't know, I think there's, out in the Midwest, I know there's a lot of codes and ordinances as it pertains to greenhouses, but not so sure that they are here. I think maybe sometimes they rely on similar square footage, but not necessarily the exact usage of the building that's going up. So a couple more questions for staff as we roll into that. Okay. That's all I had, open admin-wise. Anybody else have anything? We'll go down quickly through agendas, if not. Week of October the nineteenth, Tuesday the twentieth is a huge event up at the Union Mills Homestead. Huge, huge event, huge event.
SRO. Does Frazier's all be there?
It's the, it's the Frazier Show at eight AM at the Canary Barn. That's the Chamber of Business Breakfast, and that's the first one that's going to be in person, so we'll see how that one rolls right along. Frazier will actually be standing in the middle of Route ninety-seven and the rest of the crowd, because of social distance, will be on Union Mills property. I wouldn't do that to you, Dennis, that's a dangerous intersection here. Anyway, nine AM, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, Commissioner Rothstein that day. At two PM is the Veterans Advisory Board meeting, Commissioners Rothstein and Weaver.
Commissioner Rothstein, I'm sorry to interrupt, I just want to say, Planning and Zoning said you could be late if you're coming to my, to my meeting, so just keep that in mind.
He's insinuating, don't show up, I think.
It's a fifty-fifty, I'll figure it out.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
No, that's quite all right. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, never mind. I was going to make a reference to a meeting that occurred last night, but I'm not going to. Wednesday at noon is, for those that didn't know, the young lady, Jennifer Burr, who was the manager of our Tawny Town Senior Center, has decided to go in another direction. And she was an incredible young lady up there who touched the lives of a lot of the seniors in the Tawny Town and surrounding areas, and she's going to sorely be missed up there. So they're having a social-distanced event for her, and I will be stopping up there at noon on Wednesday, the twenty-first, to bid her a farewell, and I've got a certificate for her and what have you from us. Community College Board of Trustees meeting meets at four PM that day, and that's Commissioner Weaver. Thursday, the twenty-second, we go into open session. There's also another retirement that's happening from the Health Department. That's a young lady that many of us have dealt with many, many times over the last few years, and that's Cindy Bosley. Cindy's going to be retiring from the Health Department, so we're going to pay tribute to her that morning. Then, as we typically do, we'll go into all things COVID. We also have several farm programs to exercise options on to purchase. We have some vouchers for Citizen Services. We have some digital evidence management system software for the Sheriff's Department, and we have a lease renewal over at Hoods Mill. Agenda probably to grow from there, but that's what we have so far. At seven PM that evening, Commissioner Weaver talked about this earlier, is Finksburg Planning and Citizens Council meeting, and Commissioner Weaver will be the keynote at that event. And Commissioner Rothstein has the podcast that week. Moving on to the week of the twenty-sixth, really nothing scheduled until our open session on the twenty-ninth. That will have various items on our agenda to include, obviously COVID again, we have our bond authorizing resolution as we are nearing the rating that we're, the rating that we always go through, annual rating. We're going to get an added report from the Department of Planning. We have a contract with Department of Public Works. We have mouth easements that we're going to talk about and discuss and possibly pass. We have long-term housing opportunities through our Health Department to discuss. And again, I would assume that will probably grow. That evening at seven PM, we have comp rezoning, that's the, is that, that's just a hearing, is that right, Ed? No, it's not a hearing?
It's a listening session from the community.
Got it, okay, got it. All right, so that's at seven PM. And I've got the podcast again, I thought I just did it. I've got the podcast that week. additions or corrections to the agendas? Anything else for open admin?
Motion recess going to closed.
Okay, we have a motion to go to closed. Is there a second?
Can we say a motion to adjourn and go into closed, since it's an administrative session? Motion to adjourn going to closed.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. All right, we've got a motion to adjourn and go into closed. All those in favor? That's unanimous. A reminder for everyone to remain vigilant, stay safe. Temperatures are supposed to go down a little bit over the weekend, but continue to enjoy the outside areas that we have, and we got a good report on those from our Director of Park and Recs today. All right, with that being said, we're out. We will see everyone next week, and I want everybody to remain until we get confirmation that we're off the air. Thanks, stay safe. And I want everybody to remain until we get confirmation that we're off the air. Thanks. Stay safe.